Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing for December 15th of 2015. We're glad you're with us today. Our custom is to present the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance before calling the meeting officially to order. Today, the invocation will be presented to us by Reverend Scott Hammond, Director from Light of Christ Angelican Church in Marietta. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Officer Malory. For those that wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Lord God, Jesus taught us that to lead, first we must learn to serve. And our representative government shows that truth because these commissioners have been chosen to serve and represent their constituencies. Lord God, we pray special blessing. We pray for wisdom and honor among them. We pray for their staffs. We lift up Cobb County. Lord God, we pray that you continue to bless us with prosperity. We pray that you continue to bless us from harm, from within and without. Bless our law enforcement officers. Bless the firefighters and the EMTs. Lord God, it's in you that we have our life and hope, and we thank you above all things. Bless every aspect of this meeting and the business conducted here today. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend and Officer Malory. We appreciate you getting our day started. We'll now call this meeting officially to order. John, if you would please review our processes and procedures, and we'll go into the consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is asked to stand to signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify that they are here also, so that they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward to be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. Each side gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute timeframe. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about. Because it's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board will start to discuss the matter at hand. From the discussion, I may ask one more of the speakers to come forward for additional information or for questioning. After that, the Board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case they're talking about. There are two cases on today's printed agenda, which I've been withdrawn and would not be heard today, and these are withdrawn without prejudice. First case is SLEP 13, Krista Thomas. That case was withdrawn by the applicant, would not be heard today. Second case is Other Business Item Number 54, Brand Properties. That case was withdrawn without prejudice and would not be heard today. Additionally, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda, which have been continued by the staff or the planning commission, and would not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-87, Vehicle Acquisitions II LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the February 2016 zoning hearing, so that case would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-98, Columbia Properties Capital LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the February 2016 zoning hearing cycle, so that case would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-102, Griffin Real Estate Management LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the February 2016 zoning hearing cycle, so that case would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-105, EAH Acquisitions LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the February 2016 zoning cycle, so that case would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-106, CRP Oakmont Skyline II LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the February 2016 zoning cycle, so Z-106 will not be heard today. Rezoning case, or excuse me, Land Use Permit Number 30, John S. Heil. That case was held by the Board of Commissioners until the March 15, 2016 zoning hearing, so LEP 30 would not be heard today. Lastly, on the printed agenda, SLEP 9, Southern Link Wireless. That case was continued by the staff until the February 2016 zoning hearing cycle, so SLEP 9 would not be heard today. Mr. Chairman and Board, there is one case that's requesting a continuance that we need your vote. The applicant is present, but the applicant for rezoning case Z-95, Race Track Petroleum, Inc., is requesting a continuance to work with the neighbors, I believe.
Good morning. Parks Huff, behalf of the applicant. We have some issues to resolve with the DOT and right-of-way and such, so we just need some more time to be able to evaluate those considerations. And also, we have engaged the community in working with them, and they've been told about this request and continuance.
So next August will be fine? Commissioner Burrow.
February seems like it's about that far away.
Seeing if you're paying attention. Commissioner Burrow.
Thanks. Yes. Thanks, Mr. Huff. We have met and with DOT as well, and I will make a motion that we continue this until the February zoning hearing.
There's a second, but Commissioner Hahn, call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask the audience today, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. The ring does interfere to broadcast and presentations. So if you have a cellphone, please mute the volume. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Let's go.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners and zoning hearing consent agenda for December 15th, 2015. Rezoning case Z-99, Randy P. Wolpin, requests a rezoning from RSL to R-20 for the purpose of a single-family residential unit in landlots 621 and 638 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Bankstone Drive, north side of Horseshoe Bend Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-99 to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on September 28, 2015. Any improvements to the property must be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission prior to issuance of any permits. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-99? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-101, Knowledge Universe Education LLC, requests a rezoning from NS to NRC for the purpose of a daycare facility in landlot 694 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Powder Springs Road, northeast of Horseshoe Bend Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-101 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on September 30th, 2015. Signage to comply with the current code, including freestanding sign to be made ground-based monument style. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-101? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-103, Mark Simmons, requests a rezoning from HI with stipulations for the purpose of allowing an additional use of commercial indoor recreation in landlot 940 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Old 41 Highway, west side of tourist drive, and the north side of Marble Mill Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-103 to the HI with stipulation zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Allowance of commercial indoor recreation use as a permitted use within the HI Heavy Industrial zoning district. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-103? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-104, Tyler Chandler Homes LLC, requests rezoning from R-20 to RM8 for the purpose of a attached residential in landlot 209 of the 17th District. The property is located at the northeast corner of Santown Road and Osborne Road and at the western terminus of Pear Street. The planning commission recommends deletion of Z-104 to the RA6 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2015, with the district commissioner approving the final site plan. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 24, 2015. Architecture to be substantially similar to the renderings contained in the zoning analysis, which was received by the zoning division on October 21st, 2015. Maximum of six units per acre, maximum 10% rental. Installation of a six-foot wooden privacy fence along adjoining properties that terminate along Pear Street. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-104? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-107, Xenus Colette, requests a rezoning from IAF to R-20 for the purpose of a single-family residential, which is existing, in landlot 14 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southern terminus of Woodhaven Drive, south of Oakwoods Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-107 to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2015, showing the existing structures. All future improvements to meet R-20 standards, noting that any exceptions will require a variance. Property to meet all R-20 requirements, including no business, no employees, no commercial activity on the site unless otherwise granted and some other application. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-107? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LEP 35, Jessica Moore, requests a land use permit for the purpose of a daycare in landlot 411 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Shenandoah Trail, south of Landmark Trail. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 35 for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Maximum of nine children, one additional employee, and no signs. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 35? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LEP 36, Marlene Graham and Clinton Days, requests a land use permit for the purpose of increasing capacity from six residents to 10 residents in landlot 561 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Piedmont Road, northwest of Shaw Road. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 36 for 24 months, subject to a maximum of 10 residents. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 36? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP 11, Brilliant Automotive, requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a used car dealer in landlots 37 and 38 of the 17th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Lions Club Drive, and at the southwesterly intersection of Moss Drive and Lions Club Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of SLEP 11 for 24 months, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Applicant to place a wrought iron fence along the remaining frontage from the existing wrought iron fence to the corner of Lions Club Drive, along Veterans Memorial, and along the frontage of Lions Club Drive. Fence to be installed within 12 months of the final approval by the Board of Commissioners. Applicant to provide landscaping in front of the fence along Lions Club Drive and the corner of Veterans Memorial Highway with a variety of shrubs and bushes, no less than a quantity of 20. All vehicle parking to conform to parking plan, approved by the zoning division as part of SLEP 8 of 2013. Used vehicle sales and automobile repair, which includes general repairs and auto body for this applicant only, any other use to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. All automobiles must be parked in a legal parking space. No junk or inoperable vehicles kept on site. No outdoor storage, except for the used vehicles. No parking or unloading vehicles in the right-of-way. All vehicle repairs to be done inside the building. No outdoor speakers or pagers. All exterior lighting to be designed to eliminate stray light. Onto adjacent properties, applicant shall maintain all landscaping and replace any dead plants or trees within 30 days. Applicant can renew or extend a permit via another business item, provided no code enforcement action during the time period of the permit is in effect and provided the permit is still active at the time of application. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 11? Mr. Chairman, is one person opposed to this case?
Okay, we'll pull it off.
SLEP 12, JDH Developers, requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a suite hotel in landlots 651 and 718 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southeast terminus of Cobb Place Boulevard, on the northwest side of Greer Chapel Road, and on the west side of I-75. The planning commission recommends approval of SLEP 12, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated November 23rd, 2015. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 12? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll bring forward a motion we approve the consent item as the signature is presented and as revised to exclude SLEP 11, which will be heard separately. There's a second and comments, call a question, the motion carries five zero. So let's do this. As you know, we've had a request to bring Other Business Item Number 59 forward for consideration. Let's do Other Business Item Number 59, and let's hear SLEP 11, since that was part of the consent, and I'm sure people planned accordingly. So let's go OB 59, then SLEP 11, and then on to Z-80. So OB 59.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item Number 59 is to consider revising the existing site plan for Drift East Cobb, Inc. regarding rezoning application Z-118 of 1997, for property located on the north side of Roswell Road and on the north and east sides of Marwell Drive and east of Johnson's Ferry Road, in landlot 16 of the 1st District, and landlot 829 of the 16th District. By way back, our subject property was rezoned to CRC 1997 for an existing retail and restaurant development. The property was zoned to the site plan with many conditions. The applicant is leasing the property to operate a restaurant, and would like to amend the site plan to allow an outdoor seating area to the front of the building. The patio will be designed to complement existing building architecture and surroundings. If amended, all previous conditions would remain in effect. Staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan amendment.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing for Other Business Item Number 59. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward at this time. So Other Business Item Number 59. Any speakers? Thank you, Mr. Moore. We appreciate you. Seeing and hearing, the public hearing is closed. What is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on November 10th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter from Mr. Kevin Moore dated December 10th, 2015, and our previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Hahn? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I just want to confirm the date on the letter, because mine says December 9th.
And Mr. Moore submitted a second letter the day after on December 10th. He added one thing to that letter.
All right, I don't have a copy of the letter. Can you just, oh, here it is. Let me just see what's added. So Kevin, just real quick, the letter on the 10th has all the stuff from the 9th and the one additional item?
Yes, that's right, Commissioner Hahn. We had a request from the adjoining subdivision representative to add one sentence to paragraph two, that the, that any new speakers, the sound level from the patio speakers will not exceed the sound level of speakers throughout the Avenue of East Cobb.
Okay.
So that's what was added. Everything else remained the same.
Okay, all right. Then a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. So we're finished with OB 59. Let's take into consideration SLEP 11.
Okay, I'll read that to the record. SLEP 11, Brilliant Automotive, requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a used car dealer in landlot 37 and 38 of the 17th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Lions Club Drive, and at the southwesterly intersection of Moss Drive and Lions Club Drive. The applicant is present, and there was one person in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
It appears the applicant, excuse me, Chairman, sorry, the applicant and the person in opposition are outside talking through.
Okay, well, let's let him, John, I know you've called it, but let's put that on the back burner for a minute, and let's go to Z-80, and we'll come back to it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Rezoning case Z-80, The Church of the Pentecost USA Incorporated, requests a rezoning from NS, CF, and GC to CRC for the purpose of a church in landlots 36 and 37 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Maplewood Parkway, south of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the north side of Glory Circle. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Mr. Chairman and Board, it just dawned on me that the person who may oppose this is also outside talking about another case in District 4.
Let's go have lunch.
I don't plan on being here that long.
Well, let's go to Z-88.
Z-88.
See if we can get something done.
Rezoning case Z-88, Duncan Land Investments LLC, requests rezoning from R-20 to R-15 OSC for the purpose of an addition of property to an existing OSC subdivision in landlots 307, 308, 341, and 342 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northeast corner of Blackwell Road and Carter Valley Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-88?
Mr. Duncan, good morning.
Good morning, planning commissioners, our Board of Commissioners and Chairman. For the record, my name is Richard Duncan. I am the applicant for Z-88, requesting rezoning for approximately 2.57 acres off Blackwell Road and Cedar Valley Drive for a single residential neighborhood. Originally, we brought this in, was seeking a R-15 open-space community with seven lots, but the October planning commission, it was recommended that we go to a straight R-15. The R-15 OSC is behind the new proposed plan that we've got here today. So we redesigned an R-15 layout, which covers 15,000 square foot lots, and I do have a layout that shows a, where it does meet the minimum, all lots meet a minimum of 15,000 square foot, but I've got the new proposed, what we're requesting here today, on the board Under the DOT is asking for a 50-foot half right-of-way, which consists of approximately 7,800 square feet, causing me to request variances on lots four through six that would not otherwise be needed. Also, I'm requesting that the front setbacks will be able to be moved forward and back as needed, with the rear setbacks moving consistency with them. Lots 1, 3 will remain the 15,000 square foot, if any variance. Lots 1 through 3 will maintain with 15,000 square feet, according to the stipulation 13, which states applicant agrees that if any lot variances are needed due to DOT donation of right-of-way, that lots 1 through 3 adjoining Stockton Shays subdivision will have the minimum 15,000 square foot lot size. Also, stipulation 7 states that there will be a privacy fence along Blackwell Road. Under current zoning, under current R-20 zoning, this property will be, would allow five using the existing roads, with two curb cuts on Blackwell and two curb cuts on Carter Valley Drive. I met with Commissioner Burrow and John Peterson, Jane Strickland, DOT, and after a meeting with them this week, we all agreed that this, aesthetic-wise and less impact on Blackwell Road, meets a better standard with the variances. The surrounding zoning on this piece of property to the east is a .85 acres of open space from Blackwell Preserve, which is one of my projects. The subdivision zone, R-15 OSC, Stockton's Mill subdivision zoned R-15. To the north, Stockton's Mill, which is R-15, to the west across Carter Valley Drive, is R-20. To the north, across Blackwell Road, is R-20. Also, to the north, across Blackwell Road, is an R-15 open-space community. The density of this piece, new layout of the lots, six lots, is approximately 2.35 units per acre, with Stockton Mills having a density of 2.11 units per acre. There was a stipulation submitted, revised on December 8th, covering the stipulations that were requested today, and I've given the clerk the new site plan and the new stipulation, which y'all should have all the new stipulations also. If it needs to be read, I can read the remaining stipulations, which cover your basic steps. But in the original thing, we mailed out 142 mailouts, no calls in opposition. We did have three calls asking when we're going to start the project, an agent that wanted to list the houses and about the price point of the homes. Seeing that this application meets Cobb County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and Cobb County's professional staff had originally recommended approving for the R-15 open-space community, and there is no one here in opposition today, I'm requesting, asking for your approval for Z-88, with a minimum and a maximum of six lots, with variances for lots four through six as needed, due to DOT right-of-way, with the ability to move front and rear setbacks. That's all.
Thank you. Just for the record, is there any opposition? Thank you. Could I, I'm going to have to ask a couple of questions before I turn it over to you. Richard, is your zoning, your stipulation letter, you said it was December 8th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted, do me a favor in the future, put it on your letterhead and sign it, because I just, that would be helpful in the future. If you look at number 12, I just need you to clarify something for me before I turn it over to Commissioner. It says applicant, halfway down applicant also agrees to comply with all Cobb County DOT comments and recommendations, so that probably with the exception of the 50-foot right-of-way from center line, which road?
Blackwell Road. That was, that should have been actually revised also to say complying with the 50-foot right-of-way, because the new plan shows that, this new plan set before you, shows the new 50-half right-of-way on there, so I'm willing to comply with, but I forgot to change that to where originally I've, that was something that I couldn't agree with because it was affecting the property.
So you have that, right, Commissioner? And then on 13, you said four to six, but it says one to three.
One to three will be.
One to three.
Minimum 15,000.
Will be a minimum 15,000 square foot to lots four, five, and six, which back up to the open space in Blackwell Road, will need the variances.
Okay, so then, so the DOT donation of right-of-way is which road?
Blackwell Road.
Blackwell, so we'll revise that as well, indicate Blackwell Road as opposed to the other road?
Yeah.
Okay.
On 13.
Correct. Commissioner?
Okay.
Sorry, it's just, it's Richard. It's Richard.
Do you have any more questions?
Not yet, no, keep going.
Okay. Okay, Richard, we have made some revisions. So now, the site plan with the variances are, is dated revised December 10th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And this is it. So this is going to be the one we're approving, if we approve it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Uh, just a couple of cleanups on the STIP letter. Number 12, where it reads applicant also agrees to comply with all Cobb County DOT comments and recommendations of the subject property, period. And we're striking with the exception because he has corrected that. And number 13, after applicant agrees that if any lot sizes are needed due to DOT donation of right-of-way, lots one through three joining Stockton Chase subdivision will have the minimum 15,000 square foot lots, and any front setback variances, I'm adding, any front setback variances to be compensated with the rear setbacks equally, um, overall. And, um, lots, only lots, one, two, and three will, um, require minimum lot size variances on Blackwell Road.
Four, five, and six.
I'm right, four, five, and six, sorry. So any variances on minimum lot size will be on four, five, and six, fronting Blackwell Road. Does that work?
Commissioner Burl, do you want to say fronting? They don't front Blackwell, they back up to Blackwell. Do you need to say?
Well.
Back up to Blackwell or?
The lots adjacent to Blackwell.
Lots adjacent to Blackwell, yeah.
Which are actually the same ones.
Okay, and then, um, I, I need to, um, well, I was gonna add in a 17, that the final site plan be approved by District Commissioner, but we have that now. So, um, final site plan shown as revised December 10th. Okay. And one thing I just want to point out before I make my motion is the open space from the, property across the street that was zoned earlier, in 2013, will remain open space for that community. Okay, I'm ready to make a motion unless you, anybody has any questions? Okay.
On, uh, item number five, this is on the letter dated December 8th where it says all lots in the new proposed subdivision will have sodded and irrigated front yards. Do you want to have four and five sodded in the rear also because of front on Blackwell?
There's gonna be a fence there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of runoff and just overall appearance, that there's no grass. Because I'm assuming he has to grade the entire site. It just, since it's on Blackwell, you might want to, because normally, I mean, right now it talks about the decorative fencing along, with number seven, it talks about all the landscaping, um, you know, kind of what we expect to see on the main road is on Carter Valley, and Blackwell's just getting a privacy fence. It just seems like you might want to spruce up Blackwell a little bit. At least have grass on it. Just a suggestion.
Okay, but four and five, the rear is facing Blackwell.
Correct.
The rear of the lot.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Oh, you're not, you're not gonna put sod in the back, in the rear lots?
Was not planning on putting any sod in the rear of the lots, and that's not really gonna help the aesthetics looks from Blackwell Road either, because being the privacy fences there, you're not gonna be able to see the sodded rears either way.
It's seeded, it's seeded versus sodded.
Oh, okay. But there'll be grass. You'll have grass back there.
There'll be grass, yes, there'll be decorative landscaping grass. In the, in the, in the strip between the fencing and the side, new sidewalk, or the sidewalk on Blackwell will also be sodded. You know, you won't want to put a whole lot of shrubs in there because it could block visual up Blackwell Road, and being that's gonna be dedicated right-of-way, it would be, to put any, any kind of new shrubbery, that would be, would not be efficient.
Okay, so lots four and five will be seeded and landscaped?
They'll be landscaped.
Okay, well, let's just add that to seven. Okay, so lots four and five.
Just to be clear, all the, all the rear, all the rear lots are gonna be seeded.
All the rear lots.
As I mean, Brayden wouldn't let them out do that.
Okay. So all rear lots will be seeded and landscaped.
Yeah. All right, I have another question about the privacy fence then. Normally, when it's a privacy fence, it's gonna be up against the main road. It's a double, I forget the actual term.
Shadow box.
Shadow box.
That's what I prefer, a shadow box.
Okay, can we, you know what we're talking about? Yeah, can we put that in there? Because right now it just says privacy fence, and, you know, normally the, the folks are gonna want the smooth side on their side, and you're gonna get the, unless you specify shadow box.
Yeah, I usually put shadow box on.
So that's number seven, it would just say also there'll be a shadow box privacy fence.
Right. I think that'll look a little better.
Number seven.
On Blackwell?
Yeah.
Privacy shadow box fence along Blackwell Road, okay. And you're, is, what's the decorative fencing on Carter Valley?
It'll be, will be, there'll be brick columns with the, if we're putting the shadow box fence, they have shadow box fencing in between the columns on Carter Valley Drive also. They'd be like, normally you'll put a three-by-three column with fencing in between them, which would be the shadow box fencing in between them also.
Okay. So, do we need to change that or just leave?
Good enough.
Okay. Is that all? Anything else? Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve Z 88 to, um, from the R 20 category to R 15 with STIP letter dated December 8th from Mr. Duncan with the following additions or revisions. Number seven, add in the second sentence, also there will be a privacy shadow box fence along Blackwell Road, and all rear lots will be seeded and landscaped. Number 13, add any variance, any front setback variances to be compensated with rear setbacks equally overall, and variances on minimum lot size will be on four, lots four, five, and six, front, um, adjacent to Blackwell Road. And number seven, add a 17, final site plan, um, submitted as revised and dated December 10th, 2015. And all other staff comments, recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Is the motion, it's seconded by Commissioner. Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. You're getting better, Richard, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's go back to SLUP 11.
Yes, sir. SLUP 11 Brilliant Automotive requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a used car dealer in land lots 37, 38 of the 17th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway, Lions Club Drive, and at the southwesterly intersection of Moss Drive and Lions Club Drive. The applicant is present. Earlier, there was one person here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, my name is Nicole Balsas from Brilliant Automotive. Where we applying back in 2013 for a used land permit for a used car lot. We have a few stipulations that we have to be done before, um, to get our approval. I need to wait too long to get those stipulations done, so here we go again with our plan. That's how they look, how our property looks right now. Our cop, oh. Okay. Too many things. Um, here is our car lot, right here. And it's all fence, iron fence. We have all the landscaping plan that we presented before, but now we have a problem with this.
CP, have her hold the mic up, please.
Oh, sorry. Now we have a problem with this part of the lot right here, which is 650 Veterans Memorial Highway Southwest. We've removed the fence that is all Veterans Memorial to Lions Club Drive. And we agree that that part of the property does not look good. So what we're planning to do right now, from all these fences that we've removed here, this part is all concrete, so it's not too much that we can do regardless of, um, plants and trees and stuff like that. So this part is all concrete. This part is all grass. Um, we're planning to remove the fence all along from Veterans Memorial on Lions Club Drive to Moss Drive. We're removing these trees, um, no, sorry, the fence that we have here. Yeah, it's complicated, sorry. So this is still Veterans Memorial, this part that we have grass, we're, um, we're going to plant bushes here and all here. We also have a few trees, like, I think there are three existing trees, we're planting three new trees and 17 new bushes. All this part is going to be, um, we don't know yet if they want a red mulch or some pine straw. Do you have any questions?
Anything else? Okay, why don't you have a seat, and if we have any questions, we'll have you up after we listen to the opposition. Ms. Robin?
Thank you. My name is Robin Meyer with the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to just say a few quick words here. We are very pleased at the improved, um, appearance of this business and the new plan for landscaping along this corner, especially Lions Club Drive, which leads to the South Cobb Community Center, Lions Club Park. It makes a huge difference for the look of our community. My purpose in raising my hand in opposition was really on just two very, very minor points. One is to make sure that the landscape plan that Nicole just presented is on the official record, because it didn't, as far as I could tell, it had not been officially submitted and would not have been in your minutes. And then secondly, to ask that a stipulation be attached to, to your approval that the state licensed for, that the business will obtain or transfer an existing state used car dealer license to this location within 90 days of this approval. I spoke with Nicole about this a few minutes ago. It seems to her as if 90 days is plenty of time to get that done. But as you know, the state licensing procedure provides a great deal of customer and public protection, and we want to make sure that any used car dealer is complying with that state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Any other speakers? The public hearing is closed. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with, um, Ms. Meyer's comments that the site has greatly improved, and we know even the prior owner took a lot of steps to improve the condition of the site as it is today. The outstanding points were shared by, um, Robin Meyer with the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I would like to see a copy of the landscape plan that you just referred to, and we can include that in the record.
Clark has one.
Thank you, and I have one additional question for the applicant, Ms. Balsas. Yes, there was a question of ownership being transferred. That's from the prior owner to you.
The ownership on the business of the lot, of the property. My father has that business for 10 years in the same location under a different name, and then he transferred the business to me, and then, um, 2013, that's when I applied the first time for the new license and the new permit.
Okay. If you applied for it in 2013, what confidence do we have that you'll be able to get a transfer within 90 days from today?
Oh, well, actually, the license that my father has, it expired. And when I applied here and all this stipulation that I couldn't done on time, I went to Douglas County and I get a license over there. So my license is in Douglas County. I have a broker license that I have to transfer to Cobb County now.
Okay, so you're, you were in process of getting all of that worked out, and then you got caught up in the
Yes.
land use and zoning process here. Okay. All right, well, with that, just find my notes. I'm gonna make a motion to approve SLUP 11, subject to, um, planning comments and recommendations, where the SLUP approval is for 24 months, subject to the stipulations provided, with modification to the first stipulation that, this is subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on October 1st, 2015, with the District Commissioner approving modifications on following the zoning division, and also subject to the landscape plan provided or presented on December 15th, 2015.
So I want to make sure I understand that your motion includes all of the recommendations of the Planning Commission revised as per your.
Yes, I wasn't done with the motion, but yes, I'm just going through and stepping through some of the revised stipulations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I'll second the motion for purposes discussion.
I'm not done with the motion yet?
Pardon me?
I'm not done with the motion yet. I'm not complete with the motion yet. There's some additional revisions
Okay.
to the motion. The planning stipulation number three should be modified to read applicant to provide landscaping in front of fence along Lions Club Drive. Lions should be spelled L I O N S. A matter of fact, for all stipulations, because it's also spelled incorrectly for bullet two, Lions should be spelled L I O N S, Club Drive, and the corner of Veterans Memorial with variety of, and delete the word scrubs and replace with shrubs and bushes no less than a quantity of 20. I'd also like to add the additional stipulation that the business will transfer the existing state license of the prior owner to the current owner for this location within 90 days. to the current owner for this location within 90 days. And that this be subject to all staff comments and recommendations.
Not in conflict?
Not otherwise in conflict. And that's in my motion, yes.
Okay, then I'll second the motion. I'm just curious, it's the second bullet on the planning commission. So the fence to be installed within 12 months, the final approval, is it... We got a 24-month permit and we're giving them 12 months to put a fence in. My question is to why, why is there a need to wait 12 months to do all this work?
The planning commission just felt with everything else they had to do that that timeframe would be fair for them to complete it.
Commissioner, are you in concurrence with that?
Yes, I believe it was a financial issue with the site where they were being provided 12 months. And the Improvement Coalition was willing to wait the 12-month period.
All right, I disagree with that concept of financial consideration. Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries four, one, lead in opposition. So that takes care SLUP-11. So let's go to Z-80.
Yes, sir. Resoning case Z-80, the Church of the Pentecost, USA Incorporated, requests rezoning from NS, CF, and GC to CRC for the purpose of a church and land lots 36 and 37 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Mapleton Parkway, south of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the north side of Glory Circle. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z-80? Let the director show us one person. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. My name is Reverend Joseph Jemphy, the pastor in charge of Church of Pentecost. We bought this bank building last year in the purpose of transforming it to become a church. And we met with the Mableton Improvement Coalition and the Torres, what they were expecting. We met one of the requirement that the access to do was to cross this access road on Mableton at the back of the building, of which we've done so. And I needed to revise these drawings because the last two, the one I brought, had 15 feet setback here and also here, and 50, five zero feet from Glory Circle. And we told them that in fact, we've checked on the county notice and there's nothing like that concerning parking. And I'll be grateful if we can extend the parking to cover because it's going to cost us about $166,000 to be able to resurface these areas. And without expanding the parking lot is going to be a problem for us, of which I was told to do so. So we've revised it and as at now, present this new one to you. What they require from us again was to have trees. So we needed to give this land to a surveyor to do it autocad and also landscape architect to draw it, as you can see, and design it to their taste. And we've done that, providing trees and fans. I think one of the argument that came last time was the fans. They were saying four feet and we're proposing six. And we agreed to come on five feet as in front of Mableton. And one, or the item that I forgot to address last time was here. They used to have a canopy, like a drive-through. We had wanted to use it for drive-through prayers, but I could tell from the MIC that none of them wanted to see that building there. So we decided to strike for peace and let it go. But there's a small building that connect to it. And I explained it to them that in construction, when you are destroying or demolition, we don't know what is going to happen to it. If it comes that we can maintain it, then we'll use it for security purposes. And secondly, all the lights outside here have the mirror over here. There's one, just like this, that one is going to be gone. And I think it will be easier to bring the mirror over here for reading purposes. So if we can maintain it when destroying it, if we can maintain it, we would like to keep it for these two reasons. And besides that, I think it's well presented, the way he has drawn it. And everything to me looked very good. And I've met them with Commissioner Cupid last week and explained to their hearing as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Robin.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the vice president of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And we appreciate so much the dramatic improvements that have been made to the site plan over the time that we've been working with Reverend Jemphy. And welcome the expansion of this church to our downtown area. This is a very important property. It's within, as you can see from your map, it's within just a half a block of the intersection of Veterans Memorial and Mapleton Parkway and Floyd Road, which is, for all intents and purposes, the center of Mableton. I have two issues to address to you this morning. One has to do with the remainder of the drive-through building that was just discussed. We are very happy that the drive-through portion of that structure will be demolished and can certainly understand that the enclosed portion of it might be something which would be useful to the church. We would simply ask that if any part of that structure remains, that the ultimate appearance of it, be it color, design, materials, be subject to the approval of the district commissioner. So that we can be certain that it will be an addition, an aesthetic addition to this property. And then next, I have to tell you that the site plan that is behind me, this is the first time I've seen it. It's my understanding from what I've just heard that the only changes to it from the site plan that I saw for the first time at the planning commission has to do with the parking lot on Glory Circle. If there are other changes to that site plan, we would not be aware of them. And so I guess I ask that you, if there is a way to approve this based on the half the site plan being that presented at the planning commission and the other half of it, the Glory Circle parking lot side of it, as we see it today, I'm not sure exactly how you do that, that would be my wish for you. So thank you very much for your consideration. And our utmost thanks to the Church of the Pentecost for buying this property, improving this property, and growing here in Mableton. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Any other speakers? Now the public hearing is closed. Commissioner, just a thought to Robin's request, you could make this subject to final site plan approval by the district commissioner at a later date after you've had an opportunity to review it with Robin, if you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for John. It doesn't, we don't know, I don't know, it doesn't indicate the total square footage of the building. And I see in the notes from the pastor that they're wanting to have additional parking because they need more parking, and I appreciate all that.
They do meet the required parking for what they have currently.
Well, it seems like a lot of parking for the building.
Well, they have about 225 parking spaces, I believe, so that would seat about 800 people.
Is a building can hold 800 people?
Somewhat.
No, not as it currently exists, no.
So I wonder out loud, Commissioner, just as I wonder out loud, if the total capacity, for instance, is 400, and we don't know what it is, should the parking not reflect that standard as opposed to making all this impervious, accommodate seating that will never occur to the building because of the size?
It may not occur today, but it may occur in the future as they grow.
The building, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. I'll lay it out to you, but it seems like a lot of parking for...
It's already there.
Yes, that's the thing, it's already existing. So they wouldn't be increasing the impervious side, it's already an impervious.
Including the GC behind the bank? Okay. It looks grass, it looks like dirt to me, but...
It's really old.
Very old, yes.
Pardon me?
It's just pretty old.
Okay.
Not in the best condition.
Okey-dokey.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank the Mableton Improvement Coalition and the applicant for all of your work over the past few months to get to this product that we've seen presented here today. I do have some follow-up questions for the applicant with respect to the site plan presented this morning. If you can approach, sir. Good morning, Reverend Jemphy.
Good morning, ma'am.
Can you please tell me, what's the date on the site plan that you have there?
The date?
The date should be where it has...
It was 11 November 30th.
November 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because the one that I have is dated November 25th. And so I'm trying to understand what the differences are between what you presented this morning and the one that... Okay. And if I approve, I mean, I can approve that within 30 days. I just want to get staff's feedback on that change, whether or not you see that's something that comports with.
The plan that's up on the board does meet the county code. Because there's no setback for parking places.
There's no setback, okay. Just to give the community an opportunity to see that, what I will do is I will add a stipulation, as shared by the chairman, for approval today to be subject to my approval, district commissioner approval of the site plan within 15 days. Okay, so I can just get a chance to look at that and again, share that with the community, if that's okay with you, Robin. Okay. Also have some questions about the drive-through structure. Reverend Jemphy, when is the canopy for the drive-through structure going to be removed? Is that within the two-year timeframe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And at that time, you're going to determine whether or not you're going to retain the enclosed portion of the...
That's correct.
Drive-through structure. Okay. And I have a letter dated from the Mableton Improvement Coalition on December 10th, which echoes what Ms. Meyer shared today, that they would ask if the structure remains, the district commissioner approved, the final design, color, and use of the structure. Are you okay with us adding that stipulation in today?
Yes, ma'am, okay. It's a brickwork, I mean, brick building. So when it comes to color or painting, we don't need to paint it again. I mean, the way it is, it's brick, and I don't think, so I wouldn't mind if you have to see it or approve it, but...
Okay.
There's nothing that we're going to do to it when it comes to painting.
Okay. If we make the stip, if we make that stipulation subject to district commissioner approval, just know that that is something that would have to be determined within a couple of years.
No problem, ma'am.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, those are the only questions that I have for you, Mr. Jemphy. And again, thank you for all of your work on the site and in meeting with the community.
I appreciate it, too. And I have enough of drawings to be given to you, too.
Pardon me?
I have enough drawings to be given.
Okay, wonderful, yes. If you can leave a copy, that'd be great. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to follow planning commission's recommendation to delete to the Z-80, to the R-20 zoning category, subject to planning comments and recommendations, with the modification of bullet number 12, which will be reflected in the MIP letter, which I'll provide to the clerk. But we can modify that to share that the accessory structure, drive-through teller, to be removed within two years of final approval by the Board of Commissioners. The area to be paved and striped as indicated on the site plan. However, if the church is to remove the enclosed portion of the drive-through teller after removing the drive-through canopy, the district commissioner is to approve the final design, color, and use of the enclosed structure. Also want to back up and modify the first bullet and say that this approval is subject to district commissioner approval within third, a district commissioner approval of the site plan presented on December 15th. Let me rephrase that. Site plan subject to district commissioner approval within 15 days of the December 15th, 2015 zoning hearing. And again, I'm going to provide the clerk the Mableton Improvement Coalition letter dated December 10th, 2015. And this motion is also subject to staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Second?
Are there any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you.
John.
Yes, sir.
In the spirit of moving forward and making life easier for us all, as we move forward into the new year, beginning in February with zoning, when we get the planning commission's recommendations, instead of using bullets as to their stipulations, may we ask for a formatting change to change those to numbers, make it easier to track?
That would be a county clerk request, because they draft the minutes.
I'm not asking them.
I'll make sure it gets done, Mr. Chairman.
As a zoning manager, I would appreciate you working with whomever is required.
I'll take care of it, Mr. Chairman.
I've done that, I've asked them for stuff before, sir. It's easier to ask you.
I appreciate that.
Madam Clerk. Would that be possible? Thank you. So if you guys could go forth and multiply and make it numbers, it makes it easier to reference. 'Tis the season to be jolly, guys. So we're done with Z-80, so that takes us to Z-90, right? Seven, 97?
Z-97.
Z-97.
Resoning case Z-97, Sunspring Land Investors, requests rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the purpose of a subdivision and land lot 745 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Old Kent Road across from Porton Lane. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z-97? Let the director show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, my name is...
Good morning, my name is Dave Odom, I'm with Sunspring Land Investors. I'm here this morning with the property owners, David and Dana Mazzell, who are back here with us. We're coming to you to request a rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for just a little over three acres, located on Old Canton Road, across from the intersection of Porter Lane. Prior to our submission, when we first started working with the Mazzells, we spent some time with engineers, working with the County Water and Sewer Department and with Transportation Department, working to figure out the best layout, access, how we would serve with utilities, detention, and the associated issues that come with development. And thus, we ended up with the site plan that you see today before you go on the board. The properties around us are zoned, currently zoned, R-15 and R-12, Regent's Park being behind and to the south of us, and Orchard Grove across the street is an R-12. The exception is Mr. Jeter, who lives in the single lot immediately to our north, who is an R-20. Our site plan, as you see, calls for six lots, that we are not asking for any variances. We've met with staff, we have, as you'll see, they've made their recommendations. We are fine with everything, we have met with Ms. Strickland and discussed with her about improvements and dedication of right-of-way along Old Canton Road, which we will work through during the plan review process. One thing that was suggested to us by the Planning Commission was that we provide a little bit more information about the product we wish to build. We see this as being basically a small enclave of custom-style homes, and obviously, the economics will dictate that they'll be of high quality. We have submitted, we did stipulate in that meeting that we certainly would not do any vinyl siding. We intended for these, what we would like to do is a mix of materials, which you see reflected in their comments to you and their recommendations for approval, but we would like to be able to add hardy plank siding, shakes, various other materials, as opposed to doing all brick or all stone, because I think that becomes sort of a monotonous look. So at their suggestion, you have a letter in your file that's dated today, even though it came before today, that specifies some specifications that we would like to add and ask for approval of. First of those is that we will have nothing less than 3,000 minimum square feet, ranging upwards of 4,200 square feet and greater. In fact, I would see most of them being probably towards that higher range. We would like to do a mix of architectural styles on the front and the sides with those materials, which we have listed as brickstone, stackstone, hardy plank, shake, and stucco-type materials with complementary accents or combination thereof and of all materials. And one thing that was not brought up, but obviously, we intend to do it, is create a mandatory homeowners' association, which will be responsible for the entranceway and the area around our detention. There was one question at the time about, at the previous hearing about the detention, I think the previous developer who had the property on the contract had thought about maybe trying to use Saddle Lake as his detention. We've never had any intention of doing that. We, you should, you'll see, we showed detention on our site, and we can get that served right, we know we will be doing a lake study for sediment for pre and post-development to ensure that we have not negatively impacted the lake behind us. What we intend to do is just very similar to what's recently been done in that immediate area, in fact, there's a subdivision that's sort of directly behind us, that's been recently approved and under construction, Oakland Estates, that this will be similar in typehouses, materials, and construction is what you see there. That's pretty much all I have to tell you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Opposition, please.
Good morning, hi, my name is Christopher Peters. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I'm a resident of Porter, of Brown Ridge Drive, which is a subdivision located basically across the street from where this is going to go in. Porter Lane, yeah, if you look on the map there, Porter Lane is that, right, where that mouse is hovering right over the, directly across, runs right into Old Canton. And Brown Ridge is about 30 or so homes that zone, right, R-20 and R-15. My primary concerns here, the first one is traffic, I know it's only six homes going in, at least I just found that out today, but the, that Old Canton Road typically backs up during rush hour and in the mornings, it can be tricky to pull out from Porter Lane onto Old Canton already, so if you add another street running into that subdivision, I'm concerned of the traffic. I'm also concerned about the impact on the aesthetics of the area with the retention pond right up against Old Canton Road. Another concern I have, after seeing the presentation, is I didn't see any sidewalks or landscaping in the front of the property, where it butts up on Canton Road, Old Canton Road. And finally, I didn't hear any talk of working with East Cobb Civic Association on this. I talked to one resident in my subdivision who said she had heard of this, but I don't know that everybody in the subdivision has had a chance to have their input from the community on this. And in conclusion, I'm, I'll tell you that I'm generally opposed to rezonings like this, because I consider it infill, and there's a lot of problems. If you go further down Canton Road, there's two abandoned homes that were built way back in like 2006 or 2007, I believe the county now had to seize those homes to pay, or because the owner didn't pay the property taxes. So, in conclusion, I'm opposed to this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here today. Any other speakers? Sir, before we sit down, the Commissioner has a couple of questions for you, would you mind coming back? But the public hearing is closed for that consideration, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I did receive your email last night, and.
Thank you for responding, by the way, I saw your response.
But we did pull the, and I'll enter this for the record, you are on the list of notification. The applicant's required to notify everyone within 1,000 feet of his proposed property, and Christopher Peters and Sonia Leon, 1930 Brown Ridge Drive, are on here as being notified.
It's possible it got lost in the mail, I've had bad luck lately, but.
I'm sorry, but I just wanted to verify that with, that you are on the list as having been notified, and I will submit this for the record, but I couldn't, I didn't have access to this after five, when I got your email, so I just wanted you to be sure that you saw this.
Thank you.
And I'll submit it for the record with the file.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mr. Odom, would you come back up, please? Can, I just got a copy of this. So I did, I wanted to ask you, on the Planning Commission minutes, they, one of their bullets is, "If detention pond is required, then the concrete wall shall be faced with masonry or stamped with a decorative treatment for aesthetic, aesthetic purposes along Old Canton Road."
Yes, ma'am, we told them that would be our intention anyway. Our hope is that we will not need a concrete structure there, but in case that does happen, it'll either be brick or something decorative.
Okay, and what about your landscape plan?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Do you have a landscape plan for?
We have not done a landscape plan yet.
Okay, well then, I'll make that part of my motion, that you work with the county arborist, and final approval come back to me for the landscape plan.
That'd be.
And any fencing or, you know, how you're going to contain the detention pond.
Perfect, that'd be great.
And I do, I mean, I know how the traffic is in that East Cobb area, that's all I had for you.
Oh, thank you.
I just kind of want to address Mr. Peters' comments. But this is currently zoned R-20, the applicant is asking for R-15, which gives him one additional lot over and above what he could develop it at, as R-20, without coming through zoning and not getting any conditions or stipulations attached to the permit. Also, the surrounding R-15 is at, on the east, is 2.28 unit per, units per acre, and his proposal with the six units is 1.94, so he is under the 2.25 that we, maximum that we go by for LDR, so I'm, I think this would be a good fit for that area. So with that, I'll, unless there are any other questions or comments?
Commissioner.
Yes, one question. The gentleman who spoke in opposition also asked about sidewalks along Canton, Old Canton Road, are there existing sidewalks already on the corridor?
Just a minute, yeah, sir, I'm sorry, public hearing is closed, thank you. Commissioner Burrows.
Please hear from D O T, Jane. Are the sidewalks in the staff comments on?
Yes, ma'am, good morning, I'm Jane Strickland with D O T. There is existing sidewalk along that side of Old Canton Road, so we've asked them anything they disturb that they replace and repair, and then per the sidewalk ordinance, they'll be required to put sidewalk along one side of their development.
Okay.
And that's included.
There's sidewalks on both sides of Canton Road, of Canton Road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So that would be reflected in the D O T comments, so we'll make that part of the motion as well to include those.
Let me ask one question. That lake, Dave, can you come up for a minute? I'm assuming it's a lake, that body of water or whatever it is.
It's a private, Dave Braden with Stormwater Management Division, it is a private lake owned by the Saddle Ridge Homeowners Association.
Okay, it appears as if some of the, or some of the, what do you call it, the buffers will now be part of this subdivision.
Yes, the buffer, I believe the site plan, I think, does show the buffers extending up. The farthest one is the, is the 75-foot impervious setback, which you'll see is right on the building line, so it, that's, that works.
What about Lot 3? It appears the 30-foot building line is inside of the.
I'm sorry, that one is up, but they will have to live by that, they'll have to live by that impervious setback line.
Is that pond, is that lake or whatever, is that serving as detention for anybody, or is it just an amenity that looks nice?
Have to look how, that's an older subdivision, have to look and see if it did account for.
So I'm not asking for an answer, just, I'm raising, I mean, Stormwater Management and District and Commissioner Burrows' district is sensitive in all expressions of the word.
Sensitive in the entire county.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
But however, do the landlots of these particular, does the landlot of this particular have any rights to that lake or responsibility financially?
This parcel?
Correct.
No, I do not believe so, yeah, it was never part of that original subdivision.
Would you do me a personal favor?
Sure.
When you guys go through your review and all this, would you please make sure it's clear as to access, responsibility, buffers, et cetera, et cetera, so that when the conversation about sedimentation, not necessarily during development, but post-inmentation in five years comes along, that it's clear as to who's responsible for what, even though they may have lots that are in the buffer of the lake, but don't.
Don't touch the lake.
You got, you know exactly what to do, and I know you do, I'm just raising a.
Flag.
In public red flag for all those concerned that you got your hawk eye on this, this project because of the sensitivity of that lake.
And my comments do reflect the fact that not only are they, their engineer being required to do a pre and post-settlement survey, they have to do a downstream routing through that lake to make sure that even with this detention pond, and there is one across the street as well for the adjacent, for the subdivision across Old Canton, that routing that through the lake with the new development doesn't impact their.
Downstream stuff, great. I know you were great at it, I just need to hear it. Thank you. Commissioner Hart.
Dave. Sorry. I know it says on the notes, it's kind of hard to see on this here, that the drainage easement that goes across five and six is going to be redirected. How will, how will the purchasers of Lot number three know that they have a buffer on the back of their yard?
It will be reflected on their plat, and their, and should be transferred to the lots, any, any good survey should transfer it to their lot survey as well.
Might be something that you want to require to be put on the deed for that one lot, otherwise.
Because it's not, it's not an, well, the undisturbed buffer is across the very back, but it's outside the building footprint.
Okay, so the undisturbed buffer is the small little portion at the back of Lot 3?
That's right.
And then?
They can grade outside of that, they just can't put any impervious.
They can't put any impervious on the other part?
Vizibo or fire pit structure or something like that.
Right, okay.
On Lot 3.
And, and 4 as well, so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
This will be fun.
This isn't the most fun one, but.
We sure.
But my, my comments do reflect that that drainage, the drainage easement that's shown through those lots, that does have to be relocated, right?
Okay. Okay, I think we've had a lot of discussion, so I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve Z-97 from the R-20 category to delete to R-15 with stip letter dated December 15th from Mr. Dave Odom, with an addition, an additional stip that the final site plan with the landscaping and detention area to be approved by, landscape to be approved by county arborist, and final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. The, the buffer on lots. The buffer on lots 3 and 4 be deed restricted, and of course, on the plats for the buyers, homeowners. And all staff comments, D O T, Stormwater Management, all staff comments reflected in the recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. And that would be my motion.
I'll second your motion, any other comments? Call a question, motion carries five zero. Would you call Z-100, please?
Yes, sir. Res zoning case Z-100, Joshua and Lauren Powell, request rezoning from R-20 with stipulations to R-20 with stipulations for the purpose of amending the cemetery preservation stipulations from a previous zoning case in landlot 166 of the 1st District. The property is located on the west side of Heathermore Hill Drive, north of Roswell Road. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-100? Let the director show there's two people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward, to be sworn in.
First, I'd like to apologize.
Take your time.
Oh, sorry.
Introduce this to your friend first.
Oh, this is my nine-week-old son that the babysitter didn't show up for this morning.
Yeah.
We have plenty of folks here willing to take over should you need it, so take your time.
He's actually really good. He just sleeps.
Okay. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Powell, and I'm the homeowner of 2225 Heathermore Hill Drive. My husband and I purchased the home back in 2011. When we originally looked for a home, our main goal was to look for a home that was safe and in a good school district, which we found there. It was our first time buying a home, and we were very uninformed of the different things dealing with buffers and setbacks, and which I've learned going through this whole process. We purchased our home in foreclosure and have never met or spoken with the original builders. So we had no idea of the different things that Cobb County worked with them originally when building the home in the process until I started to come here and dealing with the hearings here. I now understand completely the leniency Cobb County gave in the building process of the home, dealing with the front setbacks, as well as the fact that the home should have probably never been put on this piece of property. The size of the home is clearly way too big for, I guess, what the builder was trying to accomplish in the beginning. When I first began to do this whole process, I tried to, I contacted Hilga Hong, and she told me what I was unable to do, like I was unable to extend my home or build a pool on the property. I researched the undisturbed buffer and never really found a clear definition of what that was. There probably may be one. I just wasn't unable. The reason I'm here today again is today to ask that I be able to keep the necessary changes of my backyard due to the safety for my children, as well as to protect my property to any more water and erosion damage. I know now that I may not have done the process correctly, and for that, I do apologize to Cobb County and the Cemetery Preservation Committee. In the past, I have heard it being stated that if the change is made for my property, it sets a precedence for the county. And that's not true at all. My situation is specific to my situation and individual circumstances. I'm not asking for there not to be a buffer at all. I'm not asking to take anything away from the cemetery. I'm simply asking for the ability to maintain my property and make it as safe as possible for my children. I'm dealing with three separate issues in the situation. I've had water and erosion damage on the rear left of the property from where the property not being level and the lack of drainage that was clearly considered in the building process of the home. This is why the retaining wall was erected in the back left and the level, and the ground was level. I've had safety issues due to only a four-foot chain link fence being erected around the cemetery on the back with no gate or chain. So unwelcome people after dark, which has been a repeated problem, have been able to enter the cemetery after dark. The lights will shine through the back of the house. There's been, I guess, teenagers playing back there. We've had to call the police. Eleven years ago, when the zoning situation was first heard, safety was not an issue. Now we have three different people that live in the rear subdivision that are on the list for, like, sexual predators behind our house. When the zoning... But today, in our world, situation has become one, change is inevitable. After having to contact Cobb County Police four times, I had cameras erected around the rear part of our property. But once someone is on the property, there is nothing I can do. So I'm asking that it made, that it be made a little harder for that to happen by allowing us to put a privacy fence along the back of our property. We've also had one big fire set in our backyard, as well as two other yards in the neighborhood, and one, and one that attempted to set a fire that did not spread. Cobb County Fire Department came out. They put the fire out, and the investigation was done, but they were not able to speak with us further about it because the person who set the fires was under 18, is which they found in their discovery of everything. And last, the natural growth of natural habitat that has taken over on my property and well as the cemetery, is the mosquito infestation was terrible, to say the least, at, as well as the property, they had poison ivy and yellow jackets. That's left two of my kids in the emergency room. I understand completely the protection of the cemetery and its history, as well as the privacy of visiting families, which is why I'm here today. We're looking for the same thing. I want to be able to maintain and protect my property and my children, and at the same time, respect and protect the privacy of the cemetery and its visitors. I do not want to extend my home, build a shed, add a pool, or even put a jungle gym for my children to play. It will stay completely natural, grass, greenery, lilies and pine straw. The retaining wall that was built in the left rear so that I can keep the level, so the level can be leveled, and drainage was ran underneath the ground so that it wasn't a mud, mud anymore. No trees were removed from the buffer, which I think was an, I think they had a misunderstanding that trees were removed. No trees were removed, other than one that was, that died. The lilies were somewhat shifted to fill in holes to create privacy for myself and the cemetery inside, and five feet of side was laid in the middle-left rear. The lilies, they're, when the home was built and they were in, the builder was instructed to put the trees, he kinda just threw them back there like a tree farm. There was no way that it was organized. So we covered the holes where, from the cemetery, they could see into us and from us to see into them, pretty much. I've tried to get in touch with Hilga Hong via phone multiple times. Again, I was even willing to maintain the cemetery because we've had so many issues with bugs and grass. It just grows and grows sometimes. It doesn't get cut. I'm not sure the exact stipulations that they have as far as the, the cutting of the grass and things like that. I went on Cobb County's website to locate Cemetery Preservation Committee, but there was no phone number. The only number I have is Hilga Hong's. All that being said, I would just like to be able to take care of, maintain and protect my property. If the Cemetery Preservation is willing to speak with me, I'm more than willing to work with them and have tried. My intentions are not and have never been to disturb the cemetery. The only thing I have done is to enhance the rear of my property, as well as the cemetery's property in view. It's now green and clean, and I'm asking that it be able to maintain that and keep it that way.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any opposition?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam. I'm the case manager for Z-100 and also in 2014 for Z-78 with East Cobb Civic Association. This case is a result of a code enforcement complaint dating back to 2014 that was currently before the courts. Ms. Powell, a property owner in Heathermore, cleared the cemetery buffer and installed a retaining wall illegally. The 2014 rezoning case, Z-78, was denied by the Board of Commissioners, and the owner was given 90 days to come into compliance and did not do so. We are back here a year later, asking for the same thing. The original zoning of the subdivision in 2004 addressed the establishment of a 50-foot cemetery buffer in the stipulation letter, as well as staff comments, all of which were recorded as stipulations on the property. In addition, the final plat of the subdivision correctly shows the 50-foot undisturbed cemetery buffer on the six lots. The developer, builder and subsequent owners knew this existed when they bought their lots or home. In fact, the front setbacks of these lots were reduced in order to give the houses more room in the back for a yard. Instead, bigger houses were built by choice. The cemetery has been there for over 100 years. It was visible when this development was started. This zoning, if approved, would set a bad precedent for Cobb County. Cases such as this were the reason that the Cemetery Preservation Code and development standards were established to begin with. The code should be upheld. This was also echoed by Mapleton Improvement Coalition in a letter submitted in '24 and is still supported by them today. In addition, I believe you all got an email from Hilga Hong from Cemetery Preservation recommending denial. The Cobb County staff has recommended denial, and in fact, the Planning Commission recommend, recommended unanimously denial by five to zero. In response to the question of whether or not she can put a fence in her backyard, the answer is yes, she can. She can just not put the fence in the undisturbed cemetery buffer, and this was brought out by the Planning Commission. Finally, ECCA recommends denial of this application. We support all staff comments, especially those of Cemetery Preservation. It sets a very bad precedent for the future of cemeteries in Cobb County if this petition is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Well, this would definitely set a precedent. We, we have the 50-foot buffer for cemeteries in place for a reason, to protect them. And I, I can't support any variation from that on this case. As Ms. Flam mentioned, when this was zoned originally, there were some concessions on the front setbacks to accommodate the rear setbacks. And the encroachment on the cemetery was identified on the property and done knowingly. So I can't, I can't support, support this at all. So I would like to make a motion that we deny Z-100. And also, I forgot to mention that this did come before us last year, and it was denied. And nothing was done to come into compliance to remove the wall. So it's encroaching on the cemetery buffer. So I would make a motion that we deny Z-100 and direct the applicant to work with the County Arbors to restore the buffer.
So motion is second. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. It was shared by Ms. Flam in opposition that the applicant does have the ability to install a fence on her property. And looking at the site, where exactly could that fence go?
Tim, could you show where 50 feet is off of the property line?
Okay, so there is some backyard. It's just not much of a backyard.
And she would need to have her survey to show exactly where the boundary lines are and where the 50-foot buffer is to put the fence in, but that, it is doable.
I mean, the misfortune is that, you know, we have people developing property. I think sometimes they ask for things without thinking about the practical impact that it's gonna have on the individual homeowner who may not understand all of the conditions on a site. My heart goes out to the applicant and her talking about her children and the amount of concerns that you have with safety, fires being set, people going into the cemetery. And it just, I, I can understand why your case was denied last year and why all of the recommendations are being made for denial. But I think that there is a bit of a, there is some continuing concern about the challenges that we present on individual citizens when we allow developers to move forward. And my question is, who made the decision for this big lot to be put here with no usable, no usable backyard?
My question, my answer would be the developer, under the guidance of the zoning ordinances and the development standards, and the property owners when they purchase it, understanding what was built in front of them. Tim, can you go to the D? You see the D up there, under the word inset? Under the word insert, rather, I'm sorry, the D? That gives you your distance, doesn't it?
No, there's a measuring tool. It's not loaded. We're not looking for it.
Okay. Don't worry about it. You'll get it, we'll get it fixed. You'll get it fixed the next time. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is there a fence there at all now, as far as between this lot and the cemetery?
There's a wall, retaining wall.
There's a fence. The cemetery is boundary, bounded...
By a fence.
By a fence, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, can we bring the applicant back up here and let her address that question? She's, she's very familiar with the property. I'm not sure if there's one back there or not.
For the cemetery?
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, it would seem to me there should be a fence between, on the cemetery, between the cemetery and any lots from that.
Is there a cemetery, is there a fence at the cemetery?
At the back of the cemetery, there is a four-foot...
Correct.
A chain link fence that is there now. In the original paperwork, it says that there was that chain link fence there, so there was no need for the property owner to put a privacy fence up. But like I said earlier, like, times change where the chain link fence doesn't keep anybody from doing anything. And the, the buffer, or the 50-foot buffer, is actually three feet off the back brick wall of my house. So there's nowhere for me to put a fence on my, the 50-foot buffer. There, you can't, it would literally have to be erected along the wall of the back of the house. So you wouldn't even be able to exit out the back of the house at all to do anything.
But there is a fence there and bordering all the other properties in your neighborhood?
No, not bordering all the other properties. It's just bordering the property of the cemetery.
Watch what I mean. It surrounds around behind your neighbor, I assume, as well.
Yes. There's a four-foot chain link.
So it seems to me there is a fence, and it does offer some type of protection already.
No. There's, you can go into the cemetery. There's no, there's no like guardian, like a gate or even a chain.
I understand, but there's a fence between the cemetery and your home, already existing.
Yes. Yes, but you can walk on the sides or even, I'm not trying to protect myself from the cemetery. They can't do anything to me.
Okay.
It's the, you can get around the property of the cemetery. It's open to both neighborhoods.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries 4-1. Keep it in opposition. Yeah. Before we go to our other business items, let's just take a five-minute break. So we'll come back at 5 minutes to 11. Good afternoon. We're back to the December 15th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. We're about to embark on other business cases. Our first item is item number 49. Mr. Peterson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. The first item on today's agenda is other business item number 49, which is to consider amending the site plan stipulations for JLB Realty LLC regarding rezoning application Z-40 of 2008. The property is located on the north side of Pacers Fair Road, West of Overlook Parkway, and on the south side of Burt Adams Road and Land Lot 885 of the 17th District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned to regional retail commercial in 2008 for a proposed mixed-use development consisting of over 1 million square feet of mid and high-rise office, high-rise residential and retail. In 2008, the proposal included 78,000 square feet of retail, 600,000 square feet of office, and 450 residential units. The applicant's current proposal departs from the 2008 concept in that it's approximately half the square footage with much less intensity. The applicant has proposed in 366 residential units, which has been revised down to 353 residential units with 35,000 square feet of retail. The tallest building on the applicant's plan is five stories in height, whereas in 2008, the tallest building was 30 stories in height. The applicant is showing a setback variance along Pacers Fair Road and Burt Adams Road. The applicant is showing a setback variance along Paces Ferry Road and Burt Adams Road to accommodate the proposed development. If approved, all of the zoning conditions will remain in effect, and we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan and stipulation amendment.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for other business item number 49. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Mr. Moore?
Good, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is John Moore, and I'm here representing JLB Partners. Their principals are here. Here is the applicant in this rezoning. As Mr. Peterson said, this rezoning was, this property was rezoned originally back in 2008 as the Great Recession took, started, and is now coming back to be developed. It is a 10 and a half acre tract. I think it's important that we understand that the intensity of this proposal today is much, much less than what it was before. There were, as Mr. Peterson also indicated, there were, there was a 12-story senior rental product, there were two 16-story buildings, one a condo building, one an office building, 78,000 square feet of retail. That has been greatly diminished. In fact, we had a traffic study done that showed that in the, under the original plan, there were 11,000 vehicular trips per day, which has now been reduced to about 3,800 trips per day. And we have amended our site plan in working with the community to take the pressure off of Paces Ferry Road. I would like to thank Nancy Geisler, the president of bindings Homeowners Association, Ron Siphon, and Ken Lynch, the architect, that worked with us on the elevations for the main product along Paces Ferry Road, and Kathy Hightower and Michael Stone with the battery at Paces Ferry. For the meetings that we had, we started well before we filed the application and continued it a month to get here. And we've done two stipulation letters that we'll, I'll talk to you about as well. Start with the site plan. This is a site plan, this is Paces Ferry Road here, this is Burt Adams Road up here. When we started with the original plan, this multifamily section was down in the middle, and the townhomes were on the top. This is a retail, which has now been reduced to 30,000 square feet with 12 townhomes on top of that. So we flipped those, and the purpose of that was to get this traffic to Burt Adams Road as opposed to Paces Ferry Road. In fact, our entrance to the building, resident-only entrance here, takes them directly to Burt Adams from the parking deck. This is 46, a section of 46 townhomes, 3,300 square feet to 3,800 and up, and the 800s to a million-two in price. And this is the retail down here with the townhomes above that. This is a rendering of the, of the building on Paces Ferry that has the retail here and the townhomes here. This is what we worked with Kenneth Lynch, the architect representing bindings Homeowners Association, to try to give this a quote-unquote bindings look. These, what's a little hard to see, that you'll hopefully see better, these townhomes are set back some 20 feet from the front of the retail, and this landscaping, you see these trees and landscaping between the, right at the edge of the balcony section. So these units will have a balcony out front and the landscaping, which the landscaping also sets off these units from the lower section. You will notice also that the, there's no parking in front, the parking's been moved to the rear for both the retail and the townhomes. There were some letters we got that I'll go over in a minute. One of the questions was moving the front setback further back, but if we did that, we had to put the parking in the rear. And once I was told them that, they agreed they wanted it in the front as opposed to, they wanted the way it is with parking in the rear. This is a kind of a side view as you go down Paces Ferry Road, and you see the double parking deck back here to get to retail and townhomes with elevators. And you see a sidewalk that continues around, so it's walkable on both sides. This is a view looking east on Paces Ferry. This is Binding's main across the street from this property, and you can see in proximity, our proposed section's actually not as tall as the one across the street. But we think it fits in very well, and you can see the landscaping we're talking about up here on this balcony and along the front as well. And then this is a view looking back the other way. This is going towards 285, and you see our building, this is the Binding's main building, and this is the condo tower up closer to 285. We did a stipulation letter dated December the 10th, 2015, that dealt with all the items that I've talked about, dealt with interior improvements, it dealt with about everything that you can think of, except, once we sent it out, we got emails and conversations and further meetings with the homeowners. Ms. Kathy Hightower is here today, and she had us to her home to meet with her neighbors about this project. And she sent an email, as did Michael Stone, and as did the Fialas under the Hendricks name. But if you look at those three, a lot of those same ones are contained in each of the same. So what we did was we did a, a supplement and amendment to my stipulation letter of December the 10th, and it's dated December the 14th, to take care of those additional items that we had. Ms. Hightower and I met this morning, and I need to make another couple of changes to the stipulation letter of the 14th. Tim Davison with Water and Sewer sent an email to you and to me telling me that I had one stipulation that I shouldn't have had, dealing with water pressure. So I need to delete, on page two, Roman numeral one, paragraph three, sub-paragraph 29, needs to be deleted in its entirety. Then on the same stipulation letter, page three, Roman numeral three, paragraph one, sub-paragraph four, at the end of that paragraph, we need to add the following. This is a paragraph dealing with what the materials are for the townhomes. We need at the end say that no side of a, of a townhome shall be all hardy plank or all cedar shake, shingles. Say that real quick, I guess, cedar shake, shingles. And then, we need at the end on page four of five, at the end, we need to add a paragraph 13. And what we want to do, this deals with the 10% maximum rental, we want to make this apply to the townhomes over the retail, which is in a separate subcategory. So if you look at the stipulation letter of December the 10th, page nine, paragraph six is where that language is contained for the other townhomes. And what we would ask is that you just repeat that same language in that paragraph in this paragraph 13. Does that make sense? That work? Yes, this, yeah. Just redo six into 13. Right. Make it 13, which deals with the maximum 10% rental that we had before. And I think those are all of the changes that need to be made to this. As you can tell, a lot of people worked a lot of hours on this proposal, and I, again, appreciate very much their participation. And I know I'm quickly running out of time, and didn't mean to hurry as much as I did, but I'm certainly glad to answer any questions you have, and so are the principals of JLB. So if you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll be glad to come back and answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other speakers? So in hearing none, the public hearing is closed. John, staff's recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to the letters of agreeable conditions for Mr. John Moore dated December 10th, 2015, and December 14th, 2015, with the changes that he stated here today, subject to the site plan marked Exhibit A, which is in the December 10th, 2015 letter with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Cobb DOT comments and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Richard, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moore, one question, it's from one of the emails that I received today. There was a question about having JLB be the master developer.
It's in there.
Okay. See, I don't have a copy of the 14th letter. No, I only have the 10th. Because I got a bunch of stuff from you today, but that was not, the one that was given to me was the 10th.
Huh. Okay. It's in the 14th letter?
Yeah, it's the letter I don't have.
Right. If you look on the second page of that letter, you're looking at.
Right. Okay. Okay, all right. Yeah, I know number 30.
Number 30?
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right. And the clerk does not have these drawings, do they? I don't think.
No.
It was forwarded to you.
They was.
So you do have these? Okay. All right. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve, well, first off, before I do that, I just want to acknowledge the fact, first off, I want to thank the applicant and all the folks in the bindings community that you talked about, Nancy, and that worked with you on making this better. I, it is a substantial reduction in intensity from what was previously approved. I know that the bindings Village Homeowners Association would prefer only two stories, but I think in light of the, the drawings and, and how it's going to, I think, it's, well, first off, it's something that the county's never had, never seen before, this kind of landscaping on the different elevations. And so I appreciate you working with the photos that I sent you from the other location to try to make this work. And so with that, I'm comfortable with four stories. I know that that was the one area that was left that you all were not in agreement. So I make a motion to approve other business item number 49, as presented by John Peterson.
Second.
Second. Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
I personally can't wait for this to get done. I think this is a perfect example where this county needs to move in terms of some of the developments it's got coming down the pipe, so.
Totally agree.
I don't know who's doing it, but good job. Other business item number 50.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number 50 is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Walton Riverbend LLC regarding rezoning application Z-8 of 1999 for property located on the southeast side of Acres Mill Road and Powers Ferry Road west of Riverbend Club Drive, and landlots 1031, 1032, 1057, 1058, 1066, and 1067 of the 17th District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned R12 in 1999 for the existing apartment community. The property was a zone to the site plan for 612 units. Since the rezoning, a fire has caused 30 of the units to be destroyed. The applicant is proposing to rebuild 28 of the units in the area of the existing tennis courts. As part of this redevelopment, 45 parking spaces will be added. The proposed building will be three stories in height with parking underneath. If amended, all other zoning conditions should remain in effect. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan and stipulation amendment.
Thank you. We'll open up a public hearing for other business item number 50, 50. Anyone who wishes to make for or against, please come forward. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Moore, and I'm here representing Walton Riverbend. Mr. Barry Teague, the principal of Walton Riverbend, is here. This is what used to be called Riverbend Apartments a long time ago before they were renovated. If you could put this up first. As Mr. Peterson said, a fire occurred taking out over 30 of the units that were, were comprising this apartment complex, and this is a move to put those units, some of those units, these, this is 26 units, that will be a part of this application to replace those. And this is within the Chattahoochee River Corridor, which deals with impervious surface and land disturbance. And therefore, in order for us to relocate these, I mean, to rebuild these, we had to put it in a, a place where there was existing impervious surface. In other words, we couldn't disturb land or increase the impervious surface for this development. And we are putting it on the existing tennis courts. What you see... I'm going to slide this over this a little bit. I just need to get to this. Okay, perfect. This is the development. What you see right here is the, where the addition will be. This is Chattahoochee Trail condominiums, and Chattahoochee Chase is up, up here. And this is the location. What we have done, I'm going to take this off, is to blow up the section dealing with, I don't know how, that's good, where this is located so you can see it better. The road that comes in here, which will be discussed today, I'm sure by the people who are here, is Riverbend Club Drive, which is a private road that intersects with Powers Ferry Road. This, again, shows the location of the proposed addition. And this, what you see in dark is the drive area that comes in off of Riverbend Club Drive, and then the adjacent condominiums I mentioned. This is an architectural rendering of what this will look like. These obviously are going to be very upscale apartments right there on the, on the river, and because of the river view, are going to be expensive. What we did is to meet with the two condominium communities at Walton Riverbend Clubhouse to go over what we were proposing, and we had a very good attendance, and then we did stipulations based on that meeting. And our stipulation letters dated December the 10th. One of the primary concerns that people had is, is that Riverbend Club Drive, as it intersects Paces Ferry Road, has some challenge, is a hill and is curved, and has some challenging site distance issues, and there's been a series of accidents that have occurred there. We employed Mr. Dan Dobry with Croy Engineering to do a traffic safety analysis of that intersection. And what we agreed to do in our stipulation letter is to work with these condominium associations to improve that intersection. First, obviously, a traffic signal would be the thing that would solve the safety issues. However, it doesn't meet the warrant, the warrants necessary to justify a light unless the board determines to do that. In other words, you approve all traffic signals as a board of commission. This doesn't qualify under DOT guidelines as warranting a traffic signal. The second thing that was a possibility was to put up a crosswalk there to try to bring attention to this intersection. The problem with that is that a car approaching this intersection from in here, from the condominiums or these apartments, will not trigger anything. So it doesn't do any good as far as traffic. The third recommendation, which we think is the one, unless you decide that you want to put a traffic signal in, is to improve the site distance in both directions. There's some foliage, and there's some utilities, and there's some other things, fences and so forth, that are there that can be removed or, or moved, and will allow a greater site distance and a greater safety approach to that intersection. It will require them working with us to allow us to make those improvements, which we're willing to do. But they will have to give us permission to do that on their property as well. We also agreed, part of this, with Chattahoochee Trails, you saw the condominiums wanting proximity to, you can see on the upper side of the, of the proposed building, that there's some condominium units there. There are some trees that are, are there now, and what we've agreed to do is to enhance the trees that remain with additional trees and additional screening vegetation to block any view of, of this proposal. The next thing we did is we agree that we will certainly repair any portion of Riverbend Club Drive that is damaged by virtue of our- repair any portion of Riverbend Club Drive that is damaged by virtue of our construction activities. Chattahoochee Chase, which is the condominium, a group of condominiums closest to Powers Ferry Road and Riverbend Club Drive, had asked us about the landscaping. What we've agreed to do is landscaping at the entrance, that we will assume control of that landscaping. We will take it out, put in new landscaping, then we will continue to maintain it. They, all they have to do is give us permission in writing for us to do that, and they requested that we do that. So I'm sure we'll get that from them. And there are also twenty-four parking spaces. You can see there are... Right here. And the condominiums closest to this proposal are Chattahoochee Trail condominiums, and what we've agreed to do is to equally divide those twenty-four, with twelve going to our apartments and twelve going to their condominium association. We have code required parking for our apartments without those twelve. Those are just additional twelve for visitors or overflow. And we agreed to do that. We also agreed we would not have any outside dumpsters or trash compactors. Our building would be served by a trash compactor, but it'd be inside and be tended. There will not be any individual dumpsters or dumpsters, period. And then the rest of the proposed development remains unchanged and unaffected, and we will not be dealing with that. Those are all the stipulations that we did, and we sent that out. We also sent out the traffic analysis that Mr. Dobry did, and he's here. As I said, Mr. Teague is here to answer any questions that I can't answer. And I know that the safety issue was the big issue with the groups that we met with. I will say that the traffic from ours is only twenty-six units, and that we had traffic coming to the tennis courts, to use the tennis courts, that will no longer be there. So we're kind of replacing one type of traffic with another type of traffic, about the same. So, once again, we're here to answer any questions you might have, once you listen to the opposition.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Who do you have with you?
This is Brianna. She's eleven weeks old.
Brianna. Congratulations to you as well.
Thank you. Speaking of safety, I'm here, I live in Riverbend, Chattahoochee Trail. I live in the closest neighborhood, the townhomes that are right there.
Could I have your name? Let me have your name for the record.
Kate Stewart.
Thanks, Kate.
So I'll just speak on my behalf. I've spoken to my HOA about it. I'm also on the HOA. I've organized a lot of the communication. Walton's been great about providing us with information. But the biggest issue for me personally, and I think a lot of our neighbors, is it's so dangerous to get out of our neighborhood already. There is limited sight distance, even in that traffic study. It says even if you remove all of the bushes, it doesn't bring it to where it should be to see either way. It's also very, very hard to get out to get to this meeting. It took me seven minutes to pull out of my neighborhood this morning. If you add the, if there are twenty-six apartments, I believe, being added, even if you just add twenty-six more cars to trying to get out, people start taking bigger risks. The traffic study that they sent us has seven accidents that were caused by what they thought could have been prevented if there was a light there. In the traffic study that we had sent to us by the Cobb County Police Department, there were thirteen accidents in that time period. I'm guessing that the rest were omitted because the six were omitted since they were not traffic light things. So that is huge to us. Also, they're building forty-five spaces for twenty-six residential units. That doesn't count for, I mean, I know it's the minimum that they need to have for this space, but there's already, it's already hard to park there. So adding more cars will be a challenge. It's also an easement that we share, so I don't think, let's see, it's not, it's not our property or their property, it's a shared easement. Sorry, I'm writing out. That's what I have for most of what our issues are. Then we also have the apartment, the condos that are right next to it, they're building right next to them, and we had trouble getting, the closeness to the river is a problem with us. I know that there's already impermeable surface there, so that's why they're saying they can build there, but they're super close to the river, which we see as a, as a bad thing. I think that's all that I have to present to y'all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Adam Alterman. I live in the building that is on the river and as close to the tennis courts as you can get. I have a couple of concerns, actually three, one of which is the construction traffic. I have no idea how they're going to coordinate any of the large eighteen-wheelers that are going to be required to come in there, make their turns, turn around, deliver their materials, and turn around the oval there, the parking oval. I know there'll be repairs and all of that, but how are we going to address accessing our units while these materials are being delivered and the workers are doing their thing during the construction period? Second of all, I'm looking at Walton's own traffic study that they did on page eleven. The summary and recommendation, the third paragraph plainly states that the minimum sight distance requirements are not met. The primary reason for Riverbend Club Drive existing motorists look to the west left is the crest vertical curve on Powers Ferry Road. So there are some issues that have been raised by Walton's own study, which I'm not sure how we're going to be alleviated. And these are serious, serious issues. There's a forty, forty mile an hour speed limit on that road, which has no turning lane at all, no center turning lane, and no right turn deceleration lane or right turn, or left turn deceleration lane. So you're basically pulling into a forty mile an hour, three-lane, three-lane road with sight limitations. So I hope you all consider the risk to life and limb when considering this approval here. And I do believe it's too close to the other traffic light to the west to install a traffic light. So I'm not sure what the solution is. Also, my third point is that I believe the proposed development is completely out of character and scale and density with its surroundings. If you could kindly scale back down to the, scroll back down to the tennis court area, you can see that the, that's like a floodplain, though, even though it's slightly just out of the FEMA floodplain. It is in an area that is surrounded by the apartment's amenities, which are the tennis courts, the clubhouse, and leasing office, and the, and the swimming pool. However, once they build a twelve-thousand-foot building, it's going to be a, literally a behemoth sitting down there, surrounded by the next building to the, to the north, which is our building, is three thousand square feet and thirty feet in height. They're proposing a forty-foot tall building, again, twelve thousand square feet. Again, I think it's completely out of character with, with the surrounding buildings, and should be located up on the hill closer to where this building actually did burn down, where the rest of the apartments are, which is over towards the west in this case. Anyway, the, again, the closest building, which is typical to our condo units in our development, is thirty-one hundred square feet, and the proposed building is twelve thousand square feet. Our thirty-one hundred square feet occupies a total of eighty-five hundred square feet of impervious surface, surface. And we only have six units in that building. They're proposing twenty-six or twenty-eight units in their, in their twelve-thousand-foot building. That increases the density there of, you know, almost quadrupling it, over-quadrupling it. Anyway, I hope you all consider the change in character that this building will permanently alter the feel of the, of what is now a very scenic river, river park and river area with a hiking trails and all of that. We're not necessarily opposed to the building. We're opposed to where it's located on the Walton property. It should be closer to the rest of the apartment units, again, closer to where the actual building did burn down. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers?
Commissioners, my name is Jim Martin. I live in the first building, they're the same building Mr. Alterman lives in, right next to the tennis courts, along the riverfront. First, I want to point out that the stipulations that were discussed earlier, our communities have agreed to nothing. We did meet, and we listened. Everybody was there. I know from myself and for other people I've talked to, they just heard what they had to say. A couple of people asked questions, and many of these proposed stipulations came out of those questions, but there's not anything approaching an agreement with all those on the part of either, either community or even any, any individuals that I'm aware of in the community. It's kind of hard for me to understand why Walton would want to jam what's essentially a four-story building in between my building and that clubhouse, but that's their business, if they think that improves their bottom line enough. But the problem is, is that they don't want to build it exclusively by using their own property. They want to come into a very narrow, private, jointly shared easement, bring in materials, heavy-duty equipment, construction workers, and then ultimately, over the longer term, twenty-six new households to further impede that easement in an already very dangerous situation, getting out onto Powers Ferry Road. And the safety proposal, the study that they initiated, in some respects, I'm not sure whether, to what extent they or the county had to do with it, doesn't come up with any solutions at all, none that they were, that they have any power to implement, certainly on their own. The existing situation, as Mr. Alterman pointed out, shows that the lines of sight in both directions are well below what the county standards are at this point. And I can tell you that for every resident in our community, except in very low traffic times, and you can't even be sure then, it's, you have to steel yourself to get out on Powers Ferry Road, because you have to look to the, to the right, which is the longer distance, and then quickly back to the left. If you don't see anything, you've got to get out, and then you look back to the right and hope nothing's coming. And if somebody is coming, even at speed limit from both directions, at that point in time, the result is panic, because you don't see that you're safe getting out of there. And this is only exacerbated by raising the population of the kids that's using that by something up to as much as possibly twenty percent to an already existing, very hazardous situation. The, I think is, I think is, the first speaker pointed out, there's a discrepancy between the number of accidents in the safety study and what the police department told us. Primarily, it would appear, based on the wording of the safety study, that they were considering accidents that would have been preventable by a stoplight, which I submit is very subjective, considering that, what they call them angle accidents. I would say that however, somebody coming out of the side street in a panic, not knowing what to do, and other people looking for places to go, that I can see unangled accidents of all sort happening as a result of that. So I think that the four accidents in January through September of this year, and exacerbated by more and more people trying to get out behind you, and you know what it's like to be sitting trying to, in traffic, and people behind you impatient with you.
If you would, if you please wrap up, sir, I'd appreciate it.
Sir, before you ask your question?
Would you, I don't have a question.
I meant to apologize at the beginning. My hearing's impaired, and I'm going to hope that I can understand your question.
Well, I don't have a question, sir, and I appreciate that. I have the same inflection. I'm asking you to please wrap up your comments. The time has expired.
I'm sorry, sir.
Please wrap up your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, CP.
I knew I was getting a little verbose there.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, they've, there's three minutes available to you, if you have any comments you want to make. Three minutes reflect the time over ten minutes that the opposition went versus what was allocated.
I just have a couple. Number one, their comments about the traffic are not going to get any better whether, if we're not there. Even if you were to deny it, they're going to have the same traffic problems they have today. What we're agreeing to do is to pay for the improvements to the traffic situation to make it better for everybody. So I think, and then we're replacing traffic that's using that already from our standpoint by using the tennis courts, which is quite a, quite a lot of traffic. So I'm not quite getting that we're going to make this worse when they, it's bad for them already, and we're going to make it better. In fact, as we stated, if the county would permit a traffic signal, we'll be happy to pay for that traffic signal. And we're going to pay for, to improve the sight distance. So it's not, we cannot agree to a traffic signal because only you can agree to that, but we can agree to pay for it. So I think we're trying to do, make it much better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. John, what is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to water and sewer comments, stormwater management comments. Letter from Mr. John Moore dated December tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Proposed site plan received by the zoning division on October thirteenth, with District Commissioner approving the final site plan, and our previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Can we, Sherrod?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start off with the first thing that kind of concerns me a little bit is that the only staff comments we have are water and sewer. So Jane, if you could come up, please.
Why is that, John?
Well, we're going to find out. You've got to tell them who you are first, even though you've done it once before.
Hi, I'm Jane Stuckler. I'm a COAT.
My concern is that, you know, we hear a lot about the traffic concerns, okay, and I've seen that in some of the emails, yet we don't have any staff comments. When was the last signal warrant done at this access point? Or has the county done one?
That I'm not sure. I have a note that there's a lot of concerns. We received the traffic study yesterday, kind of mid-morning, so we haven't fully reviewed it.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions that are for you. Mr. Moore? If we could slide the picture down to the area that we're talking about here. Okay. Mr. Moore, if you look at, what I'm looking at is the oval that, you know, is kind of part of the access, Riverbend Club Drive there, the oval.
Yes.
Is there a reason why you could not say, instead of using Riverbend Club Drive, Is there a reason why you could not say, instead of using Riverbend Club Drive, put the access over to the left where there's, nope, don't slide up that much, that's a little bit too far? Because what I'm looking at, there's a stub and there's like a little circular sidewalk area next to the building there. But it appears that there's a pretty open space, and I don't know if this is a result of being in the river corridor. Why, yeah, right where the hand's going back and forth, why the access couldn't be put there?
Well, number, there is no access to tie into.
No, no, I understand that. I understand there's no access to tie into. My question is, is there a reason that as part of this, if the board were to approve this, that the access could not be redirected over to join the rest of the apartment complex access?
I don't know if there's a place to put it.
Well, that's what I'm, we're pointing at right here, this open area.
Oh, that's right. Never mind. I forgot. Mr. Teague reminded me of what I said earlier, and that is, the reason it's located where it is and not where it burned down is because it has to be located on impervious surface. We cannot exceed the impervious surface that they had before. For us to build an access would exceed the impervious surface not allowed by.
Okay, so that, my follow-on question is, where, could you show us, and they're probably going to zoom out, because we were talking about this before, where was the other, the previous building that burned down?
It's close to where the entrance is now.
But what happened to the impervious from that building?
It's been turned, it's been cleaned up and turned into grass, and there's an entrance there.
So there was a reduction in the impervious?
Yes, there was, but we can't, it's been, it's been so long ago, we cannot go back now and recapture that, is what I'm saying.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do, there's a bunch of unanswered questions that have kind of come up in the last day or so. What I would like to do is hold this, and I realize it'll be till the February meeting, but with specific instructions for various different groups. For the county DOT, I would like the signal warrant study done, and I would like some sort of suggestion or recommendation to come back from DOT on how to deal with the existing traffic issues at the entrance here, whether it be dealing with the line-of-sight issues, whether it be putting a light in. You know, with the number of accidents, I heard a bunch of different numbers. I heard four, I heard nine, I heard 13. Okay, so I think the board needs to hear, and I would like to see exactly what the situation is here. I mean, it is, it is a difficult area. So for DOT, that's what I'd like to see, and if, I would also like to see what the cost of the light is because the applicant has agreed if a light is warranted or a light can go in there that they would pay for that. And for the applicant, what I would like to see is some discussion about the construction traffic, also to explore, and I realize that this is involved with the ARC, but to explore to see if there is any way to provide a different access point by possibly reclaiming some existing impervious that could possibly be used to account for new impervious that having a different access. And so there's a couple months that you would be allowed to do that because I know there is not a zoning hearing in January. And so I would like that looked at over the next couple of months. And so that'll make a motion to hold other business item 50.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Other business item 52, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number 52 is to consider a settlement of litigation for Cumberland Mall regarding variance application V-105 of 2014 for property located on the easterly side of I-285, the southwesterly side of Cobb Parkway, the west side of Akers Mill Road, and the north side of Cumberland Boulevard, and landlots 881, 882, 912, and 913, and 948, 949 of the 17th District. The applicant's petition for a zoning variance was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals on October 1st, 2014. The applicant filed a lawsuit in Superior Court challenging the Board of Zoning Appeals decision. Prior to this case going to court, the applicant and the county entered into a mediation to resolve the conflict. Attached is a letter from Mr. Jonathan A. Page Senior dated October 15, 2015 that outlines the settlement proposal. At this time, we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed settlement of litigation proposal.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing for other business item number 52. Anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners accept the settlement proposal from the letter of Jonathan A. Page Senior dated October 15, 2015, including all the attachments in that letter.
Commissioner Rott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make a motion, I would just like to comment on the fact that for the public, what's a little bit different here is we have a settlement of litigation coming in front of the board because it is a zoning issue. All other proposed settlement of litigation has come in front of the board at executive session, but because this is a zoning, it is required to come in front of the public. This settlement of litigation comes to us as a result of mediation where both parties met and exchanged different options and finally agreed to what's here in front of us. And so since there's no other public comment, I'll make a motion to approve other business item 52.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Other business item 53.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number 53 is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for Quayar Auto Repair LLC regarding rezoning application Z-65 of 2014 for property located on the southwest side of Atlanta Road, south of Darwin Road, in landlot 370 of the 17th District. By way back around, the subject property was rezoned to tourist services in 2014 for an auto repair shop at Curry Business and a U-Haul Business. Earlier this year, the applicant brought forward this property to the Board of Commissioners to amend the lighting conditions for this property, which was approved. There are three other conditions the applicant needs to amend. First, the applicant would like to reduce the eight-foot landscape enhancement strip along Atlanta Road from eight feet to three feet. This is how, why the existing grass strip is along the road, and no other disturbance would be needed to be put in if it was reduced to three feet. Second, the applicant would like to amend a 20-foot landscape buffer along the rear property line since there's an area of concrete that butts up, so the property line cannot be planted. In the area that can be planted, the applicant has agreed to plant six southern magnolia trees that are a minimum five feet tall. The residential property owner to the rear has no problem with the buffer amendment, and they have submitted a letter stating so. Third, the applicant would like to keep their third driveway location on the north end of the property. It was stipulated by Cobb DOT that the applicant could only have two driveways. If approved, all of the zoning conditions would remain in effect, and we would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. This time, I'll open up a public hearing for other business item number 53. Is anyone wishing to speak for or against?
And that is the applicant back there.
Are you wishing to speak? I can't hear, what's he doing?
He's saying no.
No, thank you. Seeing here, you know they're persons, the public hearing is closed. What is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to the proposed landscape plan received July 11, 2014, to be approved by the county arborist. Maximum of two driveway cuts on Atlanta Road and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner, keep it.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm particularly concerned about this other business item.
Could you speak up, please?
Yes, I am concerned about this other business item coming before the Board of Commissioners. This item just, or this site just came before us in April of this year and then came before us in November of last year. During both of those times, we have discussed these stipulations, and there was work done to ensure that two out of the three were particularly part of the application. One, because there is a desire to improve the frontage along Atlanta Road, so there was significant work done by Gault Porter, who sits on the Planning Commission, to address the landscaping. Our last other business item in April addressed some concerns that the applicant had with respect to the landscaping, and so we made some modifications to address the request of the applicant. Now, within a few months later, we're coming back to address that they don't even want to do what they had requested be modified to be done in April, which I just don't understand. That should have been addressed in April. With respect to the rear landscaping, I also have a concern about that not being installed because some particular attention was paid to make sure that that landscaping was separating an intense use, which is for this site that is going to have traffic on it and the residents who are behind there. And it's not necessarily done based off of whether or not one particular resident wants it, but looking at, into perpetuity that there's going to be residential behind the site, we're trying to protect any residential base that's behind that particular site and having landscaping there. And to remove it to where the pavement's going to be is, I just don't understand why you would do that because that's where the most intense use is going to be outdoors, is where there's going to be people moving on pavement, and we're asking for that to be removed for all the activity to be seen by the residents behind there. So I'm not supportive of that as well. We didn't just address visibility, but also noise that may come from this particular site. With respect to the last request, which is to reduce the number of, or to increase the number of driveways from this very small lot from two to three, we followed DOT's recommendation in reducing that to two, and now I'm hearing that we're going to go against DOT's recommendation to increase that back to three. I would need to hear from DOT what their, to get some comments from them as to why we should accommodate this now and this November other business item, and it was not considered back in November or in April.
Hello, I'm Jane Stuckler, I'm the DOT. We would still like there to only be two driveways across this, across the site.
Okay, thank you.
And that was staff's recommendation too, right?
Yeah.
Yep, that's what I thought, okay.
With that, my motion is to not approve this other business item.
So the motion is to deny the request as presented. There's a second, but Commissioner Rott, do you have a question?
I have a question. Is that just for the two driveways? What about the landscape plan that was submitted?
Again, not to approve the landscape plan because that was part of the other business item in April that we just approved.
The plan presented is to scale back to what was approved back in April. She's wanting us to go back to the original plan.
I got you. I wasn't clear on the difference.
Oh, okay.
There's a motion, a second, any other comments?
One question.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, you said staff recommends approval. Is there a reason that you think that the original approval for this landscape plan was too much, or why would staff recommend approval of this?
Well, when this, when this was approved originally, there was a condition put in by the Planning Commission to install a 20-foot landscape buffer along the rear. There's a large concrete pad area back there that they would have to cut and remove to install the landscape buffer, and seeing how the neighbor has submitted an okay, a letter, you know, agreeing with the change, staff supported it.
So, so it was put in by P and Z and then this board approved it in April or went in?
Well, the request was approved originally in November 2014 to rezonate to these conditions right here. It came back in April this year, I think, to amend some conditions, including some lighting conditions, that was approved.
So there's a concrete order there now that would have to be ripped out in order to landscaping?
It's a concrete pad is what it is.
I see.
And the neighbor behind there is agreeable to the magnolias rather than removing the concrete?
Yeah, they submitted a letter, it's in your packet, where they're not opposing this request.
Okay, well, can we take the two items up separately or?
I prefer not to. Here's the thing, this board approved for us to put that landscaping in back in November. And the thing is, residents come and go, and similar how we had the issue with the homeowner who had an issue, we have the ability to have some forethought and be mindful of any resident that's coming in there and to protect them from the intensity of use of this particular site. So I prefer that for us to look at, not at this from an individual perspective, but look at this from a land use perspective and look at these very contrasting intensities being next to each other and providing some type of reasonable buffer between them.
What, excuse me, what was there before and how long has this business been there?
It was on general commercial prior to the zoning last year. I believe it was some type of auto repair or truck repair in the past.
So this intensity's been there for a long time?
It's been there for a number of years.
And so when the applicant came in to get a special land use permit to change the use of the commercial, then we imposed this stipulation?
It was not a special land use permit, it was just a rezoning to bring it into accordance with today's zoning code. At that time in 2014, these conditions were placed on the property.
But prior to that, it was always the same intensity, it's just we imposed it on the new owner.
It was that intensity prior to.
For that reason, I don't have, I don't see why we should have imposed it.
Let me, let me just help a little bit here. Just for clarity, in November of 2014, the applicant came in for the request to go from GC and R-20 to LI, and that particular request had a number of stipulations attached to it, of which one was to put this landscaping buffer along the entire property line adjacent to the residential property behind a parcel to mitigate sight and sound with approval of the county landscape architect. This board approved that, 5O. Commissioner Gorn making the motion and seconded by Burrow to approve that rezoning request with those stipulations. I would argue that this board may not have approved that request for that rezoning had that stipulation up and attached to it at that time. And as such, I, especially what is attempting to be done in this particular part of the community, I think it's important that if this board makes a zoning stipulation to meet conditions, existing conditions in order to get a zoning in there, even though, especially from the R-20 to LI, because GC is not one of those that we want, we want to try to get rid of GCs as often as possible, we ought to stick to that. Stick to that zoning recommendation that was made a year ago. I don't believe there's an extensive hardship been demonstrated as to why we should remove that at this point, other than the fact that it's concrete. We've had people move entire footings of houses because they were put in the wrong place. So in this particular case, I'd like this board to weigh that heavily, that this was a zoning case not, not more than 13 months ago, in which we considered all the stipulations for this property, for the use, for the road, for the residents, to be protected that are adjacent to it, just because, I mean, there's a lot of ills that we're trying to fix along Atlanta Road, and I think this is one of those ills, and I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
So we have a, we have a motion, correct?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. Is there any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. So the other business 54, we heard earlier in the day, so that puts us to other business 55.
And 54 was actually withdrawn, it wasn't heard yet.
Pardon me?
Item 54 was withdrawn.
I'm just making sure you were paying attention, John. Good job, you got that caught and corrected. Other business 55.
Other business item number 55 is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Home Depot USA Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z-1 of 1990 for property located on the west side of Cumberland Parkway, on the west side of Mount Wilkinson Parkway and on Cumberland Parkway, and on the north side of Burt Adams Road and landlot 842, 843, 884, 885 of the 17th District. The subject property was rezoned OHR in 1990 for an office development with many conditions. The applicant is proposing to build a freestanding parking garage in order to park an additional 872 cars. The proposed parking garage would have four levels of parking and would help to service the applicant's three existing office buildings. Everything else on the property would stay in its current configuration. If amended, all previous conditions would remain in effect. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan stipulation amendment.
Thank you. I'd like to open up a public hearing for other business item number 55. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing a hearing, none, the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request. Mr. Chairman, staff would recommend the board of commissioners approve the request subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on December 2nd, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Art?
Motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Second.
Second. Any other comments? Call the question, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 56 is to consider amending the stipulations for QuickTrip Corporation regarding rezoning application Z73 of 2015 for property located at the southeast intersection of Roswell Road and Oakent Road in landlot 963 of the 16th District. Subject property was rezoned to NRC in August of this year in order to redevelop the QuickTrip convenience store. The applicant has completed some of the initial construction plans and find the need to amend two conditions. The applicant is proposing to delete the speed hump installation requirement since this would add additional noise to the rear of the store, which would affect a nearby residential subdivision. The neighbors have submitted a letter that supports the rule of the speed hump condition. Second, the applicant needs to revise the zoning conditions requiring connection of the detention pond discharge pipe to a nearby head wall. The applicant has figured out another way to accomplish the proper drainage and would like the county stormwater management division to approve the final drainage plan. If amended, all previous conditions would remain in effect. Staff would ask the board of commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. I'd like to open up a public hearing for item other business number 56. I was wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. These sworn in. Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity. We actually have two items here. One is the deletion of the speed bumps behind the store.
Okay, can we... although I recognized you, would you please speak your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Richard Calhoun. I'm here on behalf of QuickTrip, and I have Ben Qualls here with me if the board has any questions.
Thank you, sir.
The first item was the deletion of the speed bumps, and we do have a letter from the Mitzi Forest Community Association. They agree with that, that they'd like to delete that requirement. There was a requirement that speed bumps be placed behind the store, and I think the consensus was, after everybody looked at it again, that that probably would cause some noise behind there that the residents did not want. The second item was really can be left as it is. There is a... there was a requirement that the... or actually a request from one of the adjoining owners, Mr. and Ms. Owens, that the drainage from the detention pond be connected directly to the head wall that's on their property. There was some confusion back and forth over the last couple of months as to where that pipe would actually go. And Mr. Owens has since... he's resolved that. He talked to Dave Braden at the stormwater management department. They've got all that worked out. And so the stipulation actually, it said if the owner, the Owens', grant an easement for the extension of the drainage pipe to the head wall on their property, and if the county approves it, then QuickTrip will connect it up like they said that they would. And that's exactly what we want to do. So there's really not any change to that, obviously. If the county wants to issue an approval here today for that connection, that's one step in that direction. But the stipulation can actually stay as it is. Those are the two conditions, and we're fine with doing that. Everybody agrees to it.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Ms. Jill?
I think I can now say good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jill Flamm. I am the case manager for East Cobb Civic Association for the original QuickTrip Z73. Just to reiterate what Mr. Calhoun said, ECCA recommends approval of item one and supports Mitzi Forest in the removal of the speed humps. With item two, we recommend denial. I believe all of you received an email from Mr. Vince Owens, who is the property owner that is directly affected by the pipe. If not, I have a copy for the clerk and for any commissioners who may not have seen it, that he recommends that this stipulation stay in to effect. So to sum up, we recommend approval of item one for the removal of the speed bumps and denial of item two for the storm pipe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing a hearing, none, public hearing is closed. John, what is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, staff's understanding that the second request is not needed anymore. They have met the condition as far as connecting the pipe to the head wall, so we can delete that from the request. And as far as the speed hump condition, staff would recommend the board remove that condition.
Thank you. It's clear as mud. Commissioner Art?
Well, that's what we're trying to get rid of, is the mud. Make a motion to approve item number one and approve the removal of item number two so that the board is only approving item number one and the other business requests, with all other conditions and stipulations to remain in effect.
Just for the record, what is other business item, the item one that we're approving? Pardon me? The removal of the speed hump. Okay, I was making sure that...
Item number two is going to remain.
No, I know the answer. I was making sure they knew the answer.
He's just trying to prove a point about numbering.
That's my job. Okay, she's asking for clarification. Mr. Art, would you be a little more clear in your recommendation, please?
We're removing the speed hump and we're removing, per the applicant's request, their request for any other changes to the previous stipulations.
I'll second that motion. Is there any other comments? Call the question, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. So that takes us to other business item number 57.
Yes, sir. This item is to consider amending the stipulations for elite auto collision sales regarding rezoning application Z175 of 1999 for property located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway and landlots 46 and 71 of the 18th District. A way of background, the subject property was rezoned to Light Industrial for retail furniture store and warehouse in 1999. One of the zoning conditions limited the use of the property for the existing furniture business use only. Furniture store has ceased operation. The applicant would like to amend the zoning conditions to allow their use to operate on the property, which is a auto body repair shop. All repairs will be done inside the building. The applicant plans on renovating the inside of the building to suit their needs. It should be noted that the applicant's use is a permitted use in Light Industrial, but they would need to have a contemporary variance to allow the use adjacent to a residential district. If amended, all of the zoning conditions would remain in effect. Staff would ask the board of commissioners to open a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. I'd like to open up a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against item number 57? Please come forward. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Quentin Lewis. I'm here from Brock Law Firm. I am here representing Mr. Schuler. I would like to start and say our goal here initially is to table this because we've been made aware of some concerns by the Mabelton Improvement Coalition that we'd like some time to redress. I was just retained on this order a couple of weeks ago, so I would like to see if tabling this is an option to address some concerns that exist.
Appreciate it. Is there any representative from Mabelton Improvement Center here? Robin, are you guys okay with that? She's nodding yes for the record. Commissioner Cupid?
Because Mabelton Improvement Coalition has a vested interest in their community, I'm going to let this be tabled. I think they're being very gracious in light of current conditions on the property in doing so, but if you guys are in agreement to table this, then I'm open to us hearing this in February.
I'll second the motion. Is there any comments? Call the question, motion carries 5-0. Thank you for being here, Mr. Lewis. Item number 58.
Mr. Chairman, item number 58 is to consider amending the zoning conditions for St. Benedict's Episcopal Church LLC regarding rezoning application Z21 of 2008, Z29 of 2012, and SLUP 9 of 2008 for property located in landlots 694 and 695 of the 17th District. Subject property was rezoned to O&amp;I with a special land use permit for a church with a private school. The applicant was limited to 280 students per the conditions on the property. Due to the growth in the area, coupled with the demand for quality education, the applicant needs to increase the number of students from 280 students to 380 students. In order to accommodate growth on the church property, the church has entered into a contract with the adjoining property owner to the north to purchase the property. This property is locally known as the Green Building, since the entire building has been painted neon green for years. Approval of this other business request is contingent on the church purchasing the Green Building. If amended, all other conditions would remain in effect. Staff would ask the board of commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. We'll open up a public hearing for other business item 58. For those wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Moore. I'm here representing St. Benedict's Episcopal Church with regard to this other business request. As Mr. Peterson indicated, we are seeking approval to increase the number of students in the school on the main campus by 100 students. Reverend Brian Sullivan is here, and he met with Mary Rose Barnes and Suzanne Ballou about this proposal. And then as a result of that, we entered into certain stipulations and agreements that are dated December the 11th. If the board should agree to approve this application, applicant shall... the first stipulation is that the church would purchase the Green Building property. And if you look at this map, this is Atlanta Road right here. This is Cooper Lake Road. This is the school in this location. This is the park. And this little property right behind that, you see a building, if you can see that, right there, that is the property we're talking about. And Mr. Peterson, that's right, it's got a... it's neon green in color that was done by the person who was upset with the county for many years, and he hasn't changed a bit. He's still upset. But the church has the ability to purchase this property from him and clean up an eyesore that's been there for a long, long time. And we've made this whole approval contingent on that, that they have 180 days or six months from final rezoning approval of this other business item within which to purchase the property. If they do not purchase it within that timeframe, then this request and approval would be void. If that building is purchased, we also agreed that we would demolish the building within 12 months from the date of purchase. We also agreed that within 30 days of the date of purchase, we would clean all the debris and maintain it in a clean and orderly fashion from that point forward. We also will, prior to the first day of school in August of 2016, we will have prepared a traffic flow plan and submit it to Cobb County Department of Transportation for their approval. Some of that would involve adding additional stacking lanes along the upper and backside and preventing vehicles backing up on Cooper Lake Road. In other words, to give us more stacking ability on campus, and we will submit that to Cobb DOT. Additionally, we agreed to stagger the arrival and dismissal times of students, providing a period of 15 to 20 minutes between each phase of arrival and dismissal. And the phases for the school first through fourth is there would be two phases that is separated by 15 minutes. And I spoke, had an opportunity to speak to Ms. Barnes before the hearing for a short amount of time, and so wanted to clarify that that is two phases, not numerous phases. And her other question was, in that regard, what about the hours of operation? The hours of operation were initially established in the original zoning that was done in 2008, and it said that the hours of operation would be from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. In the latest hearing that was had on, I think, on August 21st, 2012, we iterated that the day school class ends at 3:30 and car pools from 3:30 to 3:45. She was concerned if we're going to be extending the hours. Overall hours were unchanged from before up to 6:30. We said in the latest one that those were the hours for school and then the pickup thereafter. We don't think we're going to affect the hours at all with this phasing. They should remain the same. And then the new... obviously, the new traffic flow pattern and car pool pattern that we described in our stipulation letter would be in place and operating prior to the first day of school in August of 2016, and all prior stipulations would remain. Ms. Barnes gave us a stipulation letter from the Oakdale Community Association. She's asked, number one, for the full county plan review in the matter of rezonings, and that's not for us to agree or disagree to. And she wants to make sure, I think our stipulation will be covers her second one, which states that car pool lane traffic plans and interior traffic flow plan, including details, and that's what we plan to do and give to Cobb DOT. And then her third was the arrival and dismissal times would that extend the hours of operation, and clearly they would not, as I've already indicated by the prior zonings. And then she's asked for a revised master plan, including the changes prior to the beginning of the 2016 school year. And I don't think the only change to the master plan is this traffic flow plan, right? Okay. So I guess once that's adopted and approved by Cobb DOT, it will be actually amending the master plan. If we can give Mr. Peterson over here a copy of that as well. So I think we've responded to her questions, hopefully. But think that this obviously is an asset to the community. I had unsolicited support for this from the community, saying that this is a great thing for the community and is helping to maintain the residential standards because this school is available, and they want to see this school continue to prosper. And Reverend Sullivan and I are both here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Merry Christmas and best wishes for peace on earth.
Thank you. You too.
I'm Mary Rose Barnes of Oakdale Community Association. OCA Board takes issue with the submission of this application under the other business agenda, which rules require that the matters in question be minor. St. Benedict's, by submitting this 61-page application as other business, has not only circumvented the prescribed process of pre and post-plan review and review by the planning commission, but has stated that it considers the safety, well-being, and education of 100 additional students and concomitant changes to the traffic patterns of our community to be minor considerations. We beg to differ. Our main concern with this application and the myriad applications presented by the school since 2008 has been the major issue of safety of the students and our community. Traffic backup problems that have occurred at this school, ongoing problems have occurred, and 100 students will be more traffic. The letter of stipulations does not include any specific times of staggered arrival and pickup or number of staggered groups for the groups of overall pickup. Car pool times changes must either result in reduced class time or extended school hours. If the school hours should need to be increased, and Mr. Moore said he didn't think they would have to, which is not definitive, if the extended school hours would conflict with stipulations of early zoning decisions and should require a public hearing, the public has the right to know how and when to navigate the traffic condition caused by the car pool lanes. Neither does the stipulation letter reference the interior traffic flow pattern that the Reverend Sullivan presented to us or any traffic flow plan. The letter of stipulations would give the applicant until the day before the first day of school to present a traffic flow plan, the day before school. The stipulations do not... The stipulations do not reference the dilemma of different age group students and individual vehicles. These legitimate questions need to be answered for the protection of all. The application does not offer the community any proposed use of the adjacent property as a trade-off for the additional traffic to and fro on Cooper Lake Road, a narrow, heavily trafficked, and dangerously curving road. With the property's neighborhood shopping zoning designation, it could be used as a parking lot to help interior traffic congestion at the school, but there are no specified plans for this property save clearing and demolition within 18 months. It is not an addition to the school. If it were an addition to the school, it would require a rezoning, and it does not require... Does not allow a building to be put on it without rezoning. Well, it had to rezone. The Green Building has long been an eyesore for years and definitely needs to go, but any plans for the building... On building this property would have to come back rezoning. Neither does the application reference any plans for a change in the footprint of the school. Therefore, an approval would amount to a precedent for approval of 300 students in an unchanged footprint should St. Benedict's fail to buy the Green Building property. According to Reverend Sullivan, there is no current contract on the adjacent property. There is no guarantee there will even be a sale. This process could well be an exercise in futility. The school has been so successful, it has already expanded to add a nearby middle school and now needs to expand the stipulated allowable capacity for the lower grades. However, the school's needs must be balanced with the safety and traffic congestion concerns of our community. If this application is to be approved, we propose that the following additional stipulations be included: full plan review by county in the manner of plan review of regular rezoning applications; carpool lane plans and interior flow plan, including details of staggered carpool groups, times, arrival and dismissal; accommodation for children of different ages and individual vehicles; and overall hours for operation. I would add to that, operation of the school, not including the daycare center afterwards, to be presented for approval by the Cobb DOT and District Commissioner by July 1st, 2006. If the arrival and dismissal time changes, extend the overall hours of operation of the elementary school beyond the existing school hour stipulations. Applicant to apply for such school hours changes in a BOC Other Business Hearing on or before July 19th, 2016. Applicant present a new master plan, including changes to the interior traffic plan to the zoning office prior to the beginning of the 2016 year, and we would agree to add an addendum to that master plan for that. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, the public hearing is closing. John, what is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request. Subject to order and sewer comments, Cobb DOT comments. Letter from Mr. John Moore dated December 11th, 2015. The Green Building property to go through the zoning process prior to use in all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moore, just a quick question. Now, assuming the purchase of the Green Building and the additional students, what will be the status of the farmer's market that is typically held in the spring and summer? Because you're not going to have space, are you not?
I think...
You still have to come before.
We still have to come before you.
Right. Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Chairman, just a few comments about the Green Building. This has been something that my predecessor has been trying to get rid of. It's been around for that long, and it's been this color for that long. So, anything that the board can do to help precipitate that happening, I think, is a positive. Relative to Ms. Barnes' comments, on item number four on the stipulation letter dated December 11th, at the end of that, I'm going to add, in addition, approval by the District Commissioner. And I think, you know, there was discussion about first day of school. If it has to be signed off by DOT and the District Commissioner, it's going to have to be done sooner than the first day, prior to the first day of school, because otherwise, they're not going to be able to open. So, I'm not concerned about putting a specific date, just the first day of school, but DOT and the District Commissioner... And also, item number seven, same thing, add in there, approval by the District Commissioner. And then, I'm going to add additional stipulation number nine, which says that if the use of any buildings change, then it's to come back to the Board of Commissioners as other business. And that's relative to, I know there's been some discussion about potentially moving the administrative offices and all that, and I have put this in here just so that if that happens, that the board has an opportunity, and myself, to look at where the cars are going to park and how it's going to impact the overall traffic plan. So, with those changes, make a motion to approve other business item 58 pursuant to all other staff comments and John Moore's letter dated December 11th, 2015, with the changes to item number four and number seven, and the addition of item number nine, with all other stipulations and conditions to remain in effect.
Second.
Any comments, call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. So, other business item 59 was handled earlier. It takes this other business item number 60.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number 60 is to consider granting special exception for reduction of public road frontage as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from their November 11th, 2015 variance hearing regarding variance application V-136 Michael and Rain Thibodeau. In accordance with the zoning ordinance amendment adopted by the Board of Commissioners on July 28th, 2015, which is section 134-94A5, the Board of Commissioners shall consider granting a special exception for reduction of road frontage after approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The variance analysis is attached. The Board of Zoning Appeals considered the appeal at the November 11th, 2015 variance hearing and recommended it be approved. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider granting the special exception for reduction in road frontage as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. We'll open a public hearing for other business item number 60. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, come forward. Seeing the hearing now, the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the special exception for reduction of road frontage.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, sir. Make a motion to approve other business item 60 is approved by staff in VZA.
Thank you. We'll second that motion. Any comments, call the question. Motion carries five zero. Appreciate you. Item number 61, please.
Item 61 is to consider granting a special exception for reduction of public road frontage as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from their November 11th, 2015 variance hearing regarding variance application V-150 AJ North America LLC. In accordance with a zoning ordinance amendment adopted by the Board of Commissioners on July 28th, 2015, which is section 134-94A5, the Board of Commissioners shall consider granting special exception for reduction of road frontage after approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The variance analysis is attached for your review, and the Board of Zoning Appeals did consider this appeal on November 11th, 2015, and recommended the approval of this special exception. Staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider granting the special exception for reduction of road frontage for variance case V-150 AJ North America LLC.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to open up a public hearing for other business item 61. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Seeing the hearing now, the public hearing is closed. Staff recommendations, please.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners grant the special exception for reduction of public road frontage for variance V-150.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I'm moved.
Any comments, call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Other business item number 62, please.
Yes, sir. Item number 62 is to consider granting special exception for a reduction in public road frontage as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from their November 11th, 2015 variance hearing regarding variance application V-159 JDH Developers. In accordance with a zoning ordinance amendment adopted by the Board of Commissioners on July 28th, 2015, which is section 134-94A5, the Board of Commissioners shall consider granting a special exception for reduction of road frontage after approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The variance analysis is attached for your review, and the Board of Zoning Appeals did consider and approve the special exception on November 11th, 2015. Staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider granting the special exception for variance case V-159 JDH Developers.
Thank you. We'll open up a public hearing for other business item number 62. Anybody wishing to come and speak? There is none. Public hearing is closed. Staff recommendation, John?
Will be to approve the special exception, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented and approved by staff.
Motion to second, any comments, call the question. Motion carries five zero. That would take us to other business item number 63.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number 63 is to consider granting or is to consider many in the site plan for Mr. John Saunders regarding rezoning application number 167 of 1987, the property located on the north side of East West Connector between Hospital South Drive and Brookwood Drive and on the south side of Mulkey Road east of Ostell Road in Landlots 920 and 921 of the 19th district. Subject property was rezoned to general commercial to the site plan in 1987. Shopping center was developed there in the 1980s and has been used for a number of years. As of the last couple of years, the property has been redeveloping very nicely with a new LA Fitness and new shops and a new restaurant. The applicant proposes to install a new Chase Bank ATM near the new restaurant. The new ATM facility would take up eight parking spaces, which still leaves the shopping center with the minimum number of parking spaces. The proposed site plan and proposed rendering of the new facility are attached for your review. If approved, all previous conditions should remain in effect. Staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan amendment.
Thank you. We will now open a public hearing for other business item number 63. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing the hearing now, the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request submitted to the letter from John Saunders dated July 10th, 2014. That include the attached plans for the ATM machine and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I'm moved.
Second.
Any comments, call the question. Motion carries five zero. Item 64, please.
Yes, sir. Item number 64 is to consider a stipulation amendment for 2671 Roswell Road LLC regarding rezoning application Z-51 of 2012, for property located on the north side of Roswell Road west of Robert Lane in Landlots 961, 984, and 985, the 16th district. By way back on, the subject property is zoned R-15OC for a 21-lot subdivision. The original approval included an 18-month reversion clause, which was May 21st, 2013. The reversion clause has been extended again until in July 2014. The property is currently under development with infrastructure going in. The developer has been delayed twice during development this year, which cost him many months of good weather to build the project in. One delay was caused by GDOT, and the other delay was caused by Atlanta Gaslight. The developer has obtained construction... Has obtained one construction permit to build a house, but the curb and gutter has not been built due to the two delays from GDOT and Atlanta Gaslight. The developer has submitted a letter detailing these two holdups, which is attached in your packet. The developer will need to extend the reversion clause one more time in order to finish the project. If approved, all other previous conditions would remain in effect. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. We will open up a public hearing for other business item number 64. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come forward.
My name's Mike Deppi. AGL has held us up, and we plan on having curb and gutter in by the end of this year, if weather holds up, maybe the following week. But AGL's been our major holdup. We finally should get our final letter of approval today and be able to move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jill Fleming. I'm with East Cobb Civic Association. We thank the applicant for providing us with the additional information concerning AGL, in addition for providing us with a preliminary construction plan to get him back on schedule. The concern of East Cobb Civic Association, and more importantly, the neighbors, is that this is the second time an extension of the reversion clause has been asked for. And you undoubtedly have seen the flurry of emails from Sterling Ridge subdivision concerning this. East Cobb Civic Association and Sterling Ridge subdivision could support a 90-month extension of the reversion clause this one time, but any additional extensions are of great concern to both of us.
You realize you said 90 months.
90 days. I apologize. I'm without lunch.
Here we are at 12:30, and we're catching the details.
So, once again, we could support a 90-day extension of the reversion clause and would recommend this to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing the hearing now, the public hearing is closed. John, what's staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board extend the reversion clause 90 more days, in all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. You've all seen several emails originally in opposition to this. If you look at the property now, it's been cleared, and there are some pipes and plumbing sticking out of the ground, and I don't think we want to leave it like that. I did meet with East Cobb Civic Association and specifically Michael Hayes from Sterling Ridge, and he was very involved as well with the original zoning in 2012. The original reversion clause expired. This is the second... This is the... Will be the third one. The second one, the original developer, the deal fell through with the original purchase of the property. So, and as you heard from Mr. Deppi, the Atlanta Gaslight issues and also GDOT were some obstacles in the way, and I think that has all been cleared up. Another GDOT one hasn't, with the expectation of approval from AGL in the very near future. I would just like to, for the record, submit the letter from Mr. Deppi to Mr. Peterson dated November 24th for the record. Also, the email from Mr. Satterfield to Atlanta Gaslight dated September 10th for the record, and also a schedule as of Friday, December 10th, moving forward, if this is approved from Mr. Deppi, for the record. And those are the clerk's copies. So, with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve other business 64 to extend the reversion clause to March 31st, 2016.
There's a motion to second. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Now, before we adjourn, the Commissioner Burrow has asked us to consider an item previously addressed at this meeting. And Z-97, in making her stipulation, she failed to include PC comments as one of the stipulations to be applied to the zoning. And would like to add that at this point to Z-97, if council is okay with that.
As part of my motion.
So, you need to...
We need your mic on.
You need to do a motion to reconsider it, and then the motion to approve it with your amendment.
So, I'll make a motion that we reconsider Z-97. Is there a second? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Commissioner.
I referenced planning commission comments from the minutes in my discussion. However, the clerk advised me that when I made my motion, I said DOT, stormwater management, and all staff comments not otherwise in conflict, but I need to include planning commission comments as well.
comments as well. So, that would be my motion to add to the previous motion, planning commission comments, not otherwise in conflict.
I'll second that. Is there any questions or comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Peterson, I believe that concludes our agenda for today.
We are done for the year.
We are adjourned.
Until February of 16.